....................................................................................... This is the gentleman officially called. He wants one of the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda shall stand approved. There are none. And so it is. Item three. Board communication. We begin tonight with a special presentation. End of course, perfect scores.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, at this time we'll have Dr. Jada McLeod and Dr. Lamont Moore. They will come and present our amazing students, all of whom scored perfect scores on end of course tests.
Good evening Chairman Kenty, Vice Chairman Disney, Board of Trustees. It is again exciting to be here. This is our second round. This is our English two and of course for spring and our US History and Constitution and of course, and it's exciting that we are outgrowing our foyer to hold these students. And we are very, very proud of them. So I will at this time begin the recognitions. This means they made a perfect score on their spring and of course exam. And we are delighted to be able to recognize them tonight.
Alright, good evening everyone. We are recognizing English two. We're gonna start with Crestwood High School where the principal is Dr. Jason Leach and I think he has some assistant principals Jasmine Amaderson and Mr. Mackey here to recognize and we're gonna call and we have teachers here as well. So starting with Crestwood High School, English two perfect score, first recipient is Logan Brazil.[544.02][563.32](Applause) Teacher for Logan is Ms. Melissa Anderson. Thank you. Also from Ms. Anderson's classroom, we have Kalen McDonough.
Congratulations.
Ms. Anderson had about three other students that were not able to join us tonight, but we definitely want to recognize them and we're gonna give certificates for them as well for Crestwood High School. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We have one student from Mr. Beck's classroom, also from Crestwood High School, Kyra Ferguson. Okay. Alright, so let's have a round of applause for all of our Crestwood High School. Congratulations. We're gonna move to Lakewood High School. Principal Dr. Maggie Wright, teacher Ms. Sarah Bird, and our first recipient from Lakewood High School. It's Mr. Matthew Allen. Congratulations. Round of applause for Lakewood High School once again. Sumter High School, perfect score in English two. We're gonna start with, of course, the principal there is Anna Marie Sandor, teacher Ms. Kelly Anderson. First recipient is RV Collins.
Congratulations.
Also from Ms. Anderson's classroom, Selena Dawson. We have Wyatt Hughes, also from Ms. Anderson's classroom.
Congratulations.
And Mr. Truitt Keaton.
Congratulations.
We're gonna move to Ms. Ann Brown's class, also. Okay. Just give me a second. We definitely want to recognize Zoe Simon. From Ms. Brown's classroom, our first recipient is Jada Lewis. Jada Lewis.
Congratulations.
Also from Ms. Brown's classroom, Peyton Collett.
Congratulations.
Next from Ms. Brown's classroom is Jason O'Neil.
Congratulations.
We're gonna move to Mrs. Creach's classroom, Sumter High School. First recipient is Grace Christensen.
Congratulations.
Also from Ms. Creach's classroom, Joseph De Guzman.
Congratulations.
Also from Ms. Creach's classroom, Jada Felder.
Congratulations.
And lastly from Mrs. Creach's classroom, Taylan Savitsky.
Congratulations.
We'll now move to our US History and Constitution perfect scores, and we're gonna start with Crestwood High School. So we have some, some more. These are English two. Starsky Caswega. And we also have Stephanie Span. Alright, we're gonna move to US History and Constitution. This is coming from Mr. Michael Kremers classroom. And our first recipient is Christopher Lydic.
Congratulations.
Alright, round of applause for Crestwood High School. Moving to Lakewood High School, and this is from Michael Keraher's classroom. First recipient is Pamela Baker. Alright, we're gonna move to Sumter High School, perfect score for US History and Constitution. This is coming from Mr. Chad Howe Showers classroom. First recipient is Gabrielle Angeles. Also from Mr. Howe Showers classroom, Andrew Collins. Also from Mr. Howe Showers classroom, Joshua Matthew Espiritu. Next we have Tay Kim from Mr. Howe Showers classroom. Next we have Chloe Miller. And next from Mr. Howe Showers classroom, we have Marshall Saunders. Also from Mr. Howe Showers classroom, we have Geddy Ridgway. Next we have Olin Towery. From Ms. Anna Bailey's classroom at Sumter High School, perfect score, we have Jacob Haynes. For Mr. Robert Butler's classroom, we have Parker Nelson. For Ms. Stephanie Johnson's class, we have Haley Brewer. And our last recipient for US History from Ms. Stephanie Johnson's class, Aslyn Dueness. Congratulations once again to these students. We definitely commend them on all of their hard work on the end of course assessments, and thank you for entertaining us tonight.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, at this time we're ready for item number three point two, which is coming from the Office of Academics. Mrs. Rhodes is about to present Title One and Federal Programs information.
Good evening. To Dr. Candy, our chairperson, Ms. Boddy Disney, our co-chair and Board of Trustees, and our Leicester superintendent, Dr. Wright. I am here to introduce Ms. Jewel Stanley, who is the interim director of the Office of Federal and State Accountability, along with Ms. Jennifer Rhodes, who is the team lead of the Consolidated Finance and Applications, also of the Office and Federal State and State Accountability. They will be presenting additional information to the board tonight due to some recommendations that were presented by the Finance Committee. And it was suggested and recommended that we have them come in to give additional information so some decisions can be made on a more informed basis from the information that I presented at first, and then of course they're gonna come in to present some of the same information as well as some additional information. So the Finance Committee can make a more informed decision on next steps. And so I present them to you at this time.
First of all, I'd like to say good afternoon and thank you all for allowing us a few moments with you today. I am just pleased to be here with y'all. First of all, on a night that you've recognized so many students for their accomplishments in a classroom. It's not often that I get to see that firsthand, and I want to thank you once again for allowing us to be here on such a special night for those students. It's obvious that there's a lot of hard work going on in this school district, and we are happy to be here and be a part of what's going on. Our office tries its best to support all school districts in our state. And so with that, what I want to do is just share a little information with you all about Title One. That's one of many grants that we have in our office. As you know, there's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was reauthorized as the Every Student Succeeds Act. And in that law, the main one that we often hear about is Title One. That's the first title in that grant, and it's the largest grant that's in that law. So what I want to do is just share with you what the purpose of Title One is. So on our first slide, you'll see that the purpose of Title One is to provide financial assistance to LEAs in schools with high numbers or high percentages of children from low-income households. And that's to help ensure that all of these children meet the challenging state academic standards that we have. And of course, Title One supports schools by either being a school-wide program or a targeted assistance program. And today- And today, as we go along into our presentation, we're going to talk a lot about the school-wide program, because that's basically what Sumter County operates with, which is the school-wide programs. So with Title I, what are the requirements? The school-wide program requires that there is at least a minimum of forty percent of the population that qualifies as high poverty, okay? And of course, if we were dealing with targeted assistance schools, those numbers are lower. The threshold is at thirty-five percent. And when we talk about whether or not a school should be served as either a school-wide or maybe a targeted assistance program, it gets down to how many students do you have in that school that qualify as high poverty? And with that, I will say that if you are looking at serving students in your district, the greatest flexibility for your district is to serve schools as school-wide schools. If you were to serve your students as targeted assistance, not every child in that school would benefit from the funds that come into the school. Only those students could meet a certain poverty threshold. But with a school-wide school, it doesn't matter what the threshold of poverty is per person in that building, is everyone in that building will benefit. So when we talk about what must be included in a district plan, that's the next step, because we've already determined that Sumter uses schoolwides as the mechanism for serving students. There's also the district plan. So with your district plan, under Section 1112, the plan must describe how the district will identify and address the disparities that result in low-income or minority students being taught by ineffective, out-of-field, or inexperienced teachers. Also, we look at the poverty criteria. How are you serving those students based on what information you have? And that's where you look at things such as your free and reduced lunch count, SNAP or TANF information, the students who may be under foster care. There are lots of criteria that you can use to determine what the poverty count is. Also, that you are serving your students who are considered homeless children or youth, and that you have effective strategies in place for parent and family engagement. And of course, we want to know, when we're looking at that plan, how does the district support, coordinate, or integrate these Title I services for your preschool students or other early childhood programs? So what you're looking at doing is trying to serve your students, and it can even go beyond just your students, because we talk about serving students from birth to age eighteen, if a district chose to implement different programs to even get the students, the children, before they reach your preschool or your kindergarten classrooms. Of course, you know, when we're talking about giving federal funds to a district, there are certain assurances that must be met when you receive federal funds. And that includes making sure that you ensure that the migratory students or former migratory students are also receiving those Title I services, the same as any student that's currently involved in your school, that you provide equitable services to your private schools. They should have an opportunity to participate with these federal programs as well, that you are coordinating and integrating Title I services with other services, such as your multilingual students, your students with disabilities, like I said, the migrant students and the homeless students, and that you have a point of contact with DSS. That's to help ensure that those students who qualify for foster care are also receiving their services. And of course, that the last assurance that we look for is that you ensure that the teachers and peer professionals working in those Title I schools meet the state certification and licensure requirements. So you have all of those assurances in place, plus the next step. The next step is plan development. And so when you talk about developing a school-wide plan or the district plan, it should not be one person in a room making all the decisions. It takes a group of people. And so what we look to see is that there's been consultation with teachers, principals, and the administration, and then, of course, there are other personnel that can be involved, as well as the parents involved in their children's education. So when we are starting to think about what does that look like, many of you may remember serving in your schools, maybe on your SIC committee, and being a part of those decision-making processes. Of course, there could be call meetings with more than just SIC, and including these other stakeholders to be a part of that meeting. So what we look to see when we have the plan development is that it's done in a timely manner, that you have sign-in sheets, agendas, or meeting minutes to correlate with that meeting, and that you have a needs assessment that ties directly to the activities that are placed in that plan, and then we use GEMS, which is our electronic grants management system at the state agency, to review all of that information. We look for all of that when we are reviewing those plans. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Rhodes, who is the team lead for the Consolidated Finance and Applications team. Her team is tasked with reviewing every plan in the state, both the district-level plan as well as the school-wide plans. And so with that, she's going to talk to you a little bit about what the needs assessment looks like. Jennifer?
Good evening. I want to assure you that Pamela and I are not related, although my mother-in-law's name is Pamela Rhodes. So I found that kind of funny when Pamela came on board for the Sumter School District. I reached out and said, "Oh, we have something in common." So before I start, I do want to kind of say how my team is set up and what part I play as far as the review of Sumter's plan. So on my team, there are six ladies that serve as program managers for the state, and they all have a certain assigned amount of districts that they review the Title I plan, and then I review the Title I plan as the second-level support. So Theresa Gregory is the program manager for Sumter School District for my team. You may have heard her name. She's that first level of review, and then it comes to me to take a look at the second-level of review for Sumter School District. So I'm well aware of what's going on in Sumter's plan. My time at the SCDE goes back to when Arthena Woods was here at Sumter School District. She did a fantastic job. And Pamela and Chris, I want to say they have done a phenomenal job coming in. I'm in a lot of contact with Pamela, as well as Theresa Gregory, and Chris has done a great job as well. So I just wanted to take a moment to say what a good job that they have done and how much we do communicate together. So that being said, the second little section here is full of slides, and I don't want to just read slides to you. I really, in a little bit, want to get into timelines and allowability and things of that nature. So I'm going to kind of give you a highlight of the needs assessment and what it looks like on a school-wide plan, because honestly, like Jules said, most of your flexibility is going to go on down in those schools, and what are the needs for those kids? So honestly, just the bare line of it is, what do these kids need in their schools? Okay? If they are deemed a Title I school, that means you can provide funding for their needs. How do you determine their needs? You conduct a needs assessment, okay? That is the first step, and you'll see that on the slide. The needs assessment process is an important first step in deciding what the needs of the kids are. And so that is done through a variety of stakeholders that Jules already described. You come to the table. The principal should be leading that charge. You come to the table with many stakeholders. That can include parents, teachers, whoever knows the needs of those kids in that building. You come to the table, you have a formal conversation about the needs of the children. How do you know what their needs are? You pull the data, you interpret the data, you analyze the data, and then you decide what the priorities of that school need to be. Priorities can include many things. It can drill all the way down to the classroom level. It can go to support the teachers in the building. So it's whatever is there to support academically to move the needle in that school-wide plan. And so, like I said, stakeholders are called to the table to do that. It is a formal process. The needs assessment is a formalized process. And so Pamela, just like any other federal programs director, will have to upload each school-wide needs assessment into GEMS so that Theresa Gregory and I can take a look and drill down to see that every activity ties to the needs that are associated with that school down in that related document that she attaches. So it is a formalized process. When you take a look at the needs assessment, you're looking at strengths, measures of growth, how do you close the achievement gap, what's the priorities? All of those things are included. One thing that Jules mentioned is stakeholders, and you want that to be a diverse group, okay? Like she said, it shouldn't be one decision-making person at the table. If you've ever worked in a school or been around a school, sometimes it's easy for the principal to call all the shots, because they know what's going on. But in this process, everybody is involved, okay? So stakeholder involvement is important. The slides will drill you down, and they will talk about collecting and analyzing data. It'll drill down and give information on what that looks like, identifying and gathering the data. What kind of data are we looking at, okay? So if you dig down into those slides, you'll see that it includes more than just academics, okay? It can include surveys and things of the like. The stakeholders come together to interpret all that information, and it does take time. That's why it needs to be documented, agendas and minutes included, so that our monitoring team, when they come out, they can say, "Okay, you really have taken a look to determine the priority of this school." And then you want it to connect to implementation. So I will tell you on my side, I take a look at as the second level, return on investment. Okay? So I read the activities in Sumter's plan, and I might have a conversation with Theresa Gregory that says, "Okay, let's talk to Pamela about, is what's being included making an impact in that school-wide, and how do we do that? We have to evaluate the activities and the programs." So that evaluation piece is a portion of it as well. Okay, now I'll talk for a minute about school-wide plans. Like Jules said, when you write a Title I plan, it is done within GEMS. That is our online platform. A portion of the funding can be for the district-level use, but the majority of the funds should be pushed out to those Title I schools in rank order. And so I'm sure that Pamela has shared that process with you, but there is a district piece, and then there is a school-wide piece. Within that school-wide piece, I want to make sure that I highlight all the things that we often see. So there are many areas for allowability, but a lot of the times, we see things like counseling, school-based mental health programs, opportunities for post-secondary education, and implementation of a school-wide tiered model to prevent and address problem behavior, professional development, assistance for preschool children. So there are many aspects that come alongside that school-wide plan to support those children. And when we think about Title I funds, one of the first things that come to mind when we read the activities for a school-wide plan, are the activities reasonable? Are they allocable? And are they necessary, okay? And all of that ties back to the needs assessment and the needs for those children. Are the activities reasonable? Do they match the need within the school? Okay, so Jules is going to take a minute to talk about allowable use of funds, and then I'll come back to talk about timelines.
Okay, so one of the things that many people want to know when they call our office is, can we do this with our federal funds? We get phone calls every day from districts making sure that they're utilizing the funds in an allowable way. So when we're asked, can we use our federal funds to pay for whatever it is they're looking to pay for, there's a level of complexity to just giving an answer to a district or anyone asking the question. So first of all, we've got to look at the law itself. What's the purpose of the grant funds that we're using? That's the first step. Then, of course, we have basic allowability that falls under the UGG, which if I pulled out my little book, I left my book back at my seat, there are hundreds of regulations that we look at. The main piece that we look at is called 2 CFR Part 200, Basic Allowability. And I'm going to drill down a little bit and talk more about the basic allowability of what you can do with the grant. And then, of course, there's general allowability guidance that we get from the U.S. Department of Education. And then even the U.S. Department of Education says, "Hey, we understand that sometimes our regulations are written in a way that may not be easily interpreted," so they give us program guidance to make sure that we are utilizing the funds the way that we really need to. And of course, you and I both know that every district is different. Every district has unique challenges, and how do we meet those challenges? You're working with your principals, your teachers, your parents to try to come up with the best possible activities, and then you come up with something that may be outside of the norm, that hasn't been covered under all of those different documents that I just talked about. Then the U.S. Department of Education gives us policy letters that say, "Okay, you thought of something we didn't think about when we wrote the law or the regulations." And then they say, "Yes, you can," or "No, you can't do a particular thing based on a question that we would even ask the U.S. Department of Education." So we have all of those documents that you see on the screen to help us determine, what do we do to get a district an answer to move forward with whether or not they can do any particular activity in their plan? So with that, we have to work on determining allowability. And as Jennifer stated, when we look at whether or not cost is allowable, you will often hear us in our presentations talking to districts about whether or not it's necessary, reasonable, or allocable to the grant. So with that, we're looking to see if you are purchasing an item or a service, is it necessary for the implementation of a grant? Are you acting with prudence? Is it in line with fair market price? And then, of course, when we're talking about really necessary items, we talk about whether or not you really need this particular item, or what you're paying, is it a reasonable cost for what you're asking for? So as we move through, you'll see that there are different items that need to be addressed. So you need to make sure that what you're doing, you're treating these federal funds with consistent treatment as other funding that you would have, and that you're not using these federal funds just to meet and that you're not using these federal funds just to meet your required duties or it's not part of a cost-sharing or a match requirement. And of course, what you're putting into your plan, those activities must be implemented during the budget period that has been approved. So moving on, when we talk about necessary, there is a particular regulation that says 200.404. It really drills down into what's considered necessary. And so you will normally hear us say, "A cost is generally recognized as an ordinary or necessary for the operation of a non-federal entity to or the proper and effective performance of the grant." Meaning, is this cost a part of the plan? If you didn't put the cost in your application, we would say that it's not necessary, okay? And to that end, we also say, "Is it in your needs assessment? If it's not in your needs assessment, is it necessary?" Now, we often have times where a district realizes after they've submitted an application, after you've gone through approval, that you need to amend the plan and you need to add other items to your plan to make it fit what you're doing, to meet the needs of your students, to meet the needs of your teachers. And so at that point, the district can amend the plan. Up until basically a month or so before the grant closes, we are still taking amendments, okay? And so also what we look at is reasonableness. Reasonableness also comes into play. Like I said, with this, what we're looking to see is that you follow the processes that is stated in EDGAR, which is our grouping of regulations. You've looked at what needs to be followed by state and local laws and even what's considered with the school board. All of those things come into play. You also look at whether or not what you're purchasing, is it a good or service that you are paying the fair market price for, okay? We all understand that during COVID, there's a fluctuation in price with a lot of things, right? We all saw prices soar. All of that is also taken into consideration during that time as well because that's considered what is fair market price at the time. So when we look at the test of necessary and reasonable, like I said, it's a balancing act of looking to see whether what you've purchased is necessary for the performance and administration of the grant, whether you've paid fair market price for an item that you've purchased, whether you really need the item that you've asked for in the plan or the amendment, and do you have a capacity to use whatever you're purchasing? One of the examples I often give with capacity, I see that everybody here, it looks like you have Dell computers, if I'm not mistaken. That's the computer you've chosen to go with. I'm sure you've done a lot of research before just going with that particular computer. But let's say a school says, "I don't think I want just Dell computers. My school colors are blue and gold." And the Dell vendor says, "Well, you know, I can make your computers blue and gold for a $500 markup." Yes, you needed the computers, but was it necessary to get them customized blue and gold just so it matches your school colors? Or another example would be, "I don't want Dell computers. We want to be an all Apple school." Well, now we're looking at the capacity because your IT department has been trained with Dell products and they know how to fix Dell computers and any issues that may come up either with the software or the hardware with those computers. Now you've moved to Apple. You've created a whole new problem. The capacity isn't there for your IT staff to work on the Apple product, okay? So you think about all of those type questions when you look at necessary and reasonable. So another thing that we always make sure about districts doing is documenting. Make sure that you document what you do. So as a district moves forward with any plan that they do, they should have their meetings, they should document what they want to do. It's based on their needs assessment. They've got the data to back up why they want to do what they want to do. If you need to hire additional staff, where's the documentation for that, okay? You've decided that we need to hire additional instructional coaches because test scores may be lagging in a certain area. You've got your documentation to show that, and that also compels you to be able to hire that person. But we also want you to keep the documentation about any purchases that you make, how the funds were used because our monitoring team will come every three to five years to look over all of the information that you've kept to make sure that you remain in compliance with the laws and the regulations of our federal grants. And so with that in mind, I also want you to keep, I believe you have a document that was provided to you with allowable use of funds. That is a compilation of all of the different items we've ever seen come across our desk of what could be allowable and what's considered unallowable. And so with that, we often tell districts when they're trying to determine whether something is allowable, is one to go to that document that I've just mentioned. But do their homework. Call us, ask us questions. And I will say that Pam has always been good about calling us and making sure that, "Hey, we want to try something here in the district. Our principals want to implement this particular program. Have you seen it done somewhere before? Can you point us to anyone who's done this?" And we can often do that, just like we've done it with Pam. And of course, I want to tell you all, there is not a go-to list out there that is complete. We're constantly changing the list. We're constantly adding to it. And I want to let you know that just because it's on this list and it's allowable, some districts may choose to be a little more restrictive. For example, if the district says the only technology is purchased, will be purchased with general funds, we want to control that, then of course you're being more restrictive in that nature. And then the Title I funds for your district would not be used on technology. But that would be a decision that, like I said, the district would make. But we have a pretty good list here that we're leaving with you to share with you all that demonstrates how Title I funds can be used. So with that, here's some of the things that are general allowable purchases. You have salaries and benefits. Professional development. That could be conference attendance or that could be bringing in a speaker or a consultant to meet with the schools. It could be instructional supplies and materials. It could be other family engagement activities. You could have a big kickoff at your school or I've been even seeing it at a district level where you have a big event to make sure that you have your families involved in the education of their children. We have extended-day programs and we have field trips. And I want to be very cautious with field trips. The field trips must have a clear programmatic purpose, okay? So by that, we're not going to Carol Wens, although Carol Wens has a lovely promotion that they do and they tie it to their STEM outreach program. It sounds wonderful, but for your students to attend that, they can only look at the roller coasters, they can't get on it. And I consider that harsh punishment for a child to take them all the way to an amusement park, cruel and unusual, and not allow them to get on that roller coaster. Those type things are considered more entertainment in nature, and we veer away from that, okay? So some of the other items that can be used with the federal funds is advertising for the purpose of recruitment, program outreach, or even disposition of materials. So you're getting ready to do a big teacher recruitment, okay? You can advertise for that. That's part of what you can do. Then, of course, we also have travel costs, but there's some stipulations with your travel costs as well. We look at obviously the per diem and using the GSA rates when we talk about travel. And then, of course, we only reimburse after the travel's taken. So I just want to make sure we note that as far as some allowable uses of funds. And then things that we unfortunately do not allow for, like I said, entertainment costs. They're not going to be allowable unless you get prior written approval from the federal awarding agency, meaning the U.S. Department of Ed. And I hate to tell you, I've yet to see them approve any entertainment costs. Holiday parties, field trips, again, like I noted earlier, the amusement park, alcohol, and gift certificates. And you wonder, "Why would I even mention any of those things? We've seen them before, all of them." So you've got to be careful. Yes, we do go back and we look at expenditures to make sure all of the items are allowable. If they're not allowable, we will arrange a meeting with the district finance, with the superintendent and the Title I coordinator and say, "We've got to talk about how we can receive the funds back for items that you've purchased that were not allowable." So yes, we do look closely at everything. And so I just wanted to make sure you understood all of that and that I go back to that whole records retention. We do request that you keep all documentation for six years. The federal government can come back and ask to review our records. And a part of that review of our records, they will do a random sampling of districts. And it's usually the district that hasn't maintained their documentation for the six years is the one that's usually pulled in that random sampling. And we are asked to show what they've spent their Title I funds on. So that's all that I can share with you at this moment for allowability and its documentation. I'll turn it back over to Jennifer, and she's going to give you a little bit of information as it relates to the processes and timeframes that we keep up with as far as your timely submission of your applications as well as expenditures or amendments.
All right. So when a district receives an allocation, let's talk about like preliminary allocations go out. We send those out so that a district can go ahead and begin to do a needs assessment, begin to think about how do we need to plan for these funds? We do not load any funding into GAPS, the place where you claim the funds, until after we give out final allocations, which is typically about mid-October. When we give out final allocations for any grant, Title I, II, IV, however it may be, with it, the superintendent will receive a grant award notification that identifies how much the school district is actually receiving on the final allocation, not the preliminary, but the final. And it comes along with much information within that GAN. One item listed on the GAN is the period of performance. So that informs the superintendent that this grant is open for two years. And so they will overlap each other. So right now Pamela's planning on the '24 project, okay? When the '25 comes open, the '24 will still be open for another year. So it's constantly overlapping so the district has the opportunity to claim at all times, okay? You claim on a quarterly basis. So on the next chart, you're going to see it drilled down. Hopefully, this is on your screen. If you like me, I had to put your glasses on to see it up there. But what we do is we tell the state, "We're going to give you some expectations." Because for Title I, 85% of the funds are supposed to be claimed the first year of the grant, okay? If that does not occur and the district is not eligible for a waiver, then we have to pull back funding by the amount that the district missed it by. So being that Title I has a very specific guideline on how much needs to be claimed by when, our office went ahead and set up claiming criteria for every grant we oversee. So in our technical assistance and in our professional development, we go over this with the federal programs directors for every district. And so they have it, they know that. If you look at the timeline, the very top part is year one of the grant. The bottom is year two, and how much needs to be claimed by when. And so that is to ensure that money is not left on the table, okay? We want to have fidelity on our end. We also don't want to have to redistribute money, okay? That causes a lot of work for everybody involved. So there's many reasons why this criteria is set up, okay? So we expect to see quarterly claims. If quarterly claims are not being met, then we make contact with the federal programs person to say, "Hey, what's going on? What's going on with finance?" For every quarter, we drill down. We pull a GAPS report and we take a look to see, "Is the district meeting the claiming criteria?" If the district is not meeting the claiming criteria, we send out an email asking what's going on because this is the expectation. So I put this on there so that you understand that timelines are established per grant for quarterly claiming, and it must be done at certain times and to a certain level. Okay, let's look at the next chart. Okay, so the one we just talked about was related to finance. This one is related to GEMS and project submissions. So not only do we have finance expectations for when claims should be made, we also have expectations for when projects should be submitted. So this will show you that there's an expectation on our side that if we say, "Okay, the Title I preliminary plan is due July 1st, it needs to come in July 1st unless the district has asked for an extension," okay? And so this is the process for if the plan is not submitted in a timely manner, okay? So there's expectations for both program and finance. Okay, if we can go to the next one? All right. Let's talk for just a minute about amendments because a while ago Jewel addressed this. When you set up a Title I plan in a school-wide, it is just what it's called. It's a plan. This is what we plan to do. These are the activities we plan to do. But as we all know, sometimes that doesn't happen for various reasons, okay? Let's just say maybe I, when I ran my needs assessment, I thought I needed 30 math kids. Well, in time, as the grant runs along, I only need 20, okay? Well, Pamela will know that because she's watching with the principal those activities, looking at the purchase requisitions, how many have been ordered, when did they come in? When do we need to claim the funding for that particular activity? You're claiming by activity, okay? So there are opportunities to amend the grant. We might have had a salary in there that we could never hire for. Well, that money doesn't need to sit, it needs to be amended so that the funding can go to another area that is allowable, again, based on the needs assessment. So amendments can be done as needed. So amendments can be done as needed, okay? But when amendments are turned in, as a second-level reviewer, I do look at, well, how many are coming through? Because it all goes back to planning, right? I shouldn't see fifty coming through, bam, 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 bam. You look at it with the principal, you can look at the whole plan and say, "Where are we? At what point do we want to amend? At what point do we need to amend?" And when an amendment is done, there is another expectation so that it doesn't just stay out there, okay? So if an amendment is submitted to us, my team has thirty days to take a look and respond. So that could be, in terms of it coming back, there might be questions about allowability or need. So it could come back. So I'll refer to names, okay? Theresa may send it back to Pamela with some questions, okay? They both have thirty days back and forth. That is to make sure it doesn't just stay out there, okay? Because it all goes back to that claiming. And if amendments are just sitting out there, claiming is not being done in a timely fashion, okay? So I wanted you to see that application amendment timeframes do have criteria, okay? I'm not sure if that might be the last one, let's see. Oh, yes, it is, okay. All right, so at this time, do you have questions for Jewel or I? They giggled. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions. First question would be, when was the last time Sumter District had a claiming issue? That you had to send emails like you just said?
I'll be honest, I would have to look back to see at the last round that went out. But Sumter does not come to my mind as one that I have to keep up with.
And how often do you audit?
How often do we audit?
Do you audit and audit?
My team does not do that, but the consolidated monitoring team does. All districts are on what we call a five-year rotation. Now with that, I say five years because we try to get to you before five years and assuming...
Five years is a long time.
Yeah, five years is a long time. We actually try to get everybody within a three- or four-year timeframe. We build in an extra year in case there might be a snowstorm. There might be a tropical storm or hurricane that throws our monitoring cycle off, whatever that may be. But it is on a cyclical basis. What does happen, though, if for some reason a district is considered high-risk? That means that our agency has looked at your fiscal practices. We've looked at the programmatic practices. And we've determined that there are some red flags going on in a district. And then we will start monitoring you on an annual basis until you're off of that high-risk alert, okay? So that's part of what we do. Mostly, you're on a five-year schedule, but you can be annually monitored if you're a high-risk district.
Do they randomly just select the district?
For the normal monitoring or for the high-risk?
Just high-risk.
High-risk is determined by a set of criteria. Our offices, not just the Office of Federal and State Accountability where we're housed, but IDEA, your food and service, Food and Nutrition Services Program, as well as others. We look at everything that goes on within a district with reporting. And you receive a score based on that set of criteria, not just from one office. It comes from all of the offices that provide funding to the districts.
How often do you see it?
How often do I see a high-risk district? Unfortunately, we do see a high-risk district annually.
Well, I'm not going to ask which ones, but...
No. Yeah, you're not the high-risk district to worry about.
Well, that one we should know, but...
Yes, you should know. But if you're a high-risk district, and we've had some that come aboard because we have detected fraud or misuse of funds, and that elevates that district to high-risk, and so we will be in those districts annually. The GAN, which is a grant award notice that goes to the superintendent, clearly articulates special conditions put on the grant, which means we would monitor all of their expenditures more closely. Unfortunately, we've had a district that before they could spend the money, they had to basically ask us permission for pretty much every expenditure except for the normal salary and benefits.
And do you see more amendments closer to deadlines?
Yes, that's always the case.
And how do you feel about, what do you see in stipends for teacher bonuses-type requests? How is your, I know it's legit.
Yeah, that's a normal thing that we see. We either see sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses.
Do you see that more towards when you're up against a deadline?
We see it during all times of year. You know, some have it at the very beginning of the year, is just throughout their grant cycle.
And do you have, as you say, that the district or the board can actually instill limitations on what we can do with that Title I? Like you mentioned, the example is IT equipment.
Mm-hmm. So I want to make sure I'm clarifying this for you. You want to be very prudent with being restrictive to your grants because you can eventually lock yourself into a point where the only thing you're doing is salaries, benefits, and maybe some instructional materials. What we're told from the federal agencies is that we are to allow as much flexibility as we can with our federal funds within the law. And so what we try not to do as the state agencies is give you restrictions that would lock you into place. And so I would caution you that, yes, you can put restrictions on how you want to spend the federal funds, but you also want to be careful with that because you may end up putting yourself in a tight spot that you didn't want to do.
So be specific.
Yeah, I would be specific about those.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate you coming here. Everything we do as a board has to go to student achievement. And I'm going to surmise that everything you do with Title I has to go towards student achievement. Now, the big conundrum is, how do we measure student achievement? I know what EOC does. And I'm going to tell you, I've been an English teacher. Coming up with perfect scores is phenomenal, from the teacher's point of view and from the student. And you could see the parents, how happy they were. That's tough. We have a pile of money that we're putting into education. How do we know it is achieving student achievement, progress? Anything that goes toward helping these people get to where they need to be in life educationally. Are there tests that you administer? Are there ways you can measure this progress? I know we need to feed children, but we don't measure it, do we?
You do look at your various test scores that you have.
And which ones are they?
Well, your state-administered tests.
South Carolina Ready.
Yes.
All right. And so let's assume if we're, if this school is not performing well and you're giving us a pile of money, are we reaching student achievement?
And see, those are some of the questions that we ask. We partner with the Office of School Transformation. So if you have schools that aren't performing, they are considered either an ATSI or a CSI school. And then there are other mechanisms that go in place through the Office of School Transformation to monitor that. So what we do in our office, when we're looking at return on investment, if you are dumping thousands of dollars into a particular program, let's say a math program, I don't want to offend any vendor out there, so I'll just say Stanley Mathematics. I've created a program, Stanley Mathematics. And I've convinced this school district that Stanley Mathematics is what you need. It's going to increase test scores across the board within the first year. So you've purchased this item. Year one goes by, you might see a tiny blip. Year two goes by and is stagnant. So you ask questions, why is it stagnant? Do we have a high turnover in teachers? And they couldn't implement the program with fidelity? Or is there something more to it? And you look, year three, it's all the same teachers. So it couldn't be the teachers, they've been trained in what to do. So you start looking at the program itself. Now, research will say it takes three to five years to see a difference in anything that you've implemented. So our office would ask, "Okay, it's been five years and those math scores are tanking. You may want to consider something other than Stanley Mathematics. Stanley Mathematics sold you a bill of goods that obviously isn't working for you."
Let me ask you something. I'm a teacher at heart.
Yes.
Have taught many years. It's not the only thing I do. However, if you gave me a supplement, and it was a competitive one, and if my scores rose, and we did this at another high school, if my scores rose at the end of that school year, end of the second school year, and my salary went up because of those rises, you could probably say that supplement motivated her to be a better teacher, probably, couldn't you? But what if you just gave money randomly? And you don't watch those teachers' scores for two or three years, and they just are stagnant? Are we being effective with the money we're giving as supplements?
I would suggest that you really look at the supplements that you give. You can determine what the criteria is, make sure that's well-established. And then that's how you base whatever supplement you want to give. From our standpoint, we're not going to tell you that you give a supplement based on longevity or a supplement based on test scores. That's the determination of the district to decide how you want to move forward with that. But what we can tell you from the agency is that those supplements are allowable. It is a district decision to determine how you go about determining those supplements.
I think that clarifies it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First off, what is an LEA?
That's your local education agency, which means district.
Okay, all right, all right. Got a special term for that, okay? I have, as far as, when was the last audit done on this district? And do you guys keep a record? I'm sure you keep a record. Can we, do we have access to that?
We keep the records for six years, and you could have access to the last monitoring visit. I can't tell you off the top of my head when that visit was.
Sure, okay, that's fine.
I was trying to ask it before you.
Oh, no, you can ask him.
Sure, please, thank you.
We actually just finished a monitoring visit.
Oh, good.
And they are actively doing their official visit on October 18th. But we do have a preliminary status of that monitoring visit, and we have no findings. Meaning we are one of them.
Well, that's excellent. Well, thank you for the excellent work you're doing there. Just a couple succinct answers, if you don't mind. I don't want to drag this on any longer than half a go. But as far as like when the plan is developed, are there any common shortfalls or items that would be rejected that you commonly see?
The items that we commonly see, and Jennifer can talk more to this. I'm speaking in general of all districts, not Sumter. For, the common things that we have questions about relate to class size reduction to make sure that, one, you've met the stipulation for class size reduction. That's usually the one thing we see. Because some districts, not this one, certainly not this one, there's some districts...
Say there as many tasks as you need to. You are a lot talking about Sumter's school.
Not Sumter. Some other district, very far away from Sumter, may try to use federal funds to hire a teacher that should have been provided with their general funds. That's the main thing that we see an issue with.
And you see this often?
We do. And we look for that. And then, of course, the field trips. Someone always tries to sneak in a really fun field trip.
All right, well, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, point of order. We have members of this, of the audience that are consistently interrupting and talking over us. If you wouldn't mind addressing that, I'd very much appreciate it.
I'd ask our guests to maintain order in the corner. Any others? Any other questions? There's not many. It happens a lot more, it's been a while since I've been in the room. It's been a while since I've been here. The more you like, the more you follow, the more you learn from people.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just...
Would you stop on this side and come back?
Mr. Chair, we had a, we were hosted at Kershaw County's Woolard Technical School today. Myself, Trustee Palumbo, Trustee White, and Trustee Disney. It was phenomenal. And I just want to hats off to Mr. Morris, their director, for hosting us and showing us around. Phenomenal facility, excellent results. And so I just want to recognize those folks. Thank you very much.
That was, I know that you're a minister, and we are never supposed to covet what other people have. We sinned a lot today. We covet what we saw.
We covet forgiveness.
And with good planning, Sumter School District will probably go that direction, right, Mr. Superintendent?
I serve at the pleasure of the Board of Trustees. Yes, ma'am.
And just one more thing, if you don't mind. Out of respect for the Sumter Rotary Sunrise, they asked me to come. And it was because it was seven-thirty in the morning and it was all women. And they asked me to say some nice things about literacy, and I did.
All right, thank you. All right. No announcements? Any committee reports? Any committee reports, any recommendations?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I have a committee report.
Yes, sir.
The Facilities Committee met September the 13th here at the district office. And we discussed several items where we received updates on the capital projects. That was also discussed in the Finance Committee. We talked about Maywood football field updates. Kind of sort of had a brief discussion over some ideas leading up to what a bond referendum will look like for this district in the near future. And we also talked about getting a plan together so that the committee, along with the... the district administration and the school administration, could go out and do our school site visits to see what's out there in each of our district facilities. And so tonight, we have one recommendation to the full board, as this was also an item on the agenda for discussion. And it centered around the full board taking a look at our district facility studies that was done, I think in 2018, and now, well, 2018 to 2023. And now it's time to take a look. So the Committee, Facilities Committee is now asking that the full board take a look at the district's facility study. And if we could get a presentation that could be led by the executive leadership team and/or the company that produced the study for us. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
The Policy Committee has some recommendations for the board, quite a few, and I think we were all provided for them. However, it is lengthy, so if there is another committee that needs to make a quick report, I would defer to them first.
All right, there are none.
Okay, well, then I guess I'm up. The Policy Committee has met three times since our inception during this term, and we finally have some recommendations. There are a lot of policies that are non-negotiables, shall we say? And under the, and Ms. Scott has them for us on display. I recommend first reading on these because they are ones that we just simply don't have a lot of say in. And I know that we have to look at them. So 2A, or AA, however you would like to say it, is the district legal status. They made small editorial revisions and added a statement regarding the constitutional mandate and the use of school property. And they added the annotations that are required. So this is required for us to pass this and to have this in our books. So I recommend first reading on this. And no further comment on that if anybody has any questions, but this is just, these are straight from SCASBA. And I'm just going to quickly go through these that we really don't have a choice on. A C, I think you skipped one. A C, yeah, there we are. Okay, this is the non-discrimination, equal opportunity policy. They updated it to the model policy. Also, this, what you're looking at does not contain the names and contact information for the people responsible for these. Now, we did enter them in our working document. And Dr. Wright, if I'm not mistaken, on the person for handling inquiries, questions, and grievances is?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to create, I think the term is pseudo account, so they, so it will go to a categorical account based on what the issue is. It's Title IX, it'll say Title IX or some variation of that.
Right.
At Sumter School District. And then it will be routed to the appropriate person. The reason why we wanted to do that is to keep individual employees' emails from being, you know, we wanted to separate them out to make sure we give the proper attention to them. So we've already spoken with Mr. Jonas, and we're putting those things together as we speak.
Okay, so those.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing this policy needs then is the job title.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And the email that you set up for that.
That we end up creating, yes, ma'am. And we can do that, that wouldn't hinder the first reading approval. We'll get those straightened out of where they need to be.
And will we have those for the second reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, next is A C A. Now, this is a Title IX. Is it not up there? I don't see it on there. But it's a Title IX policy. Now, another board member brought this to my attention earlier. SCASBA recommended that we delete this policy because, in their words, the information is covered in policies G B A A and J I A A. And Ms. Disney pointed out that she didn't think that all of the federal codes were listed in those other policies. I did check that, Ms. Disney, and they are listed there for Title IX.
May I speak?
Please.
I'm not sure all of them are. These are hot links as exists right now.
Right, mhm.
And if anybody wants to see if there's been a Title IX violation, as hot links, it goes straight to the federal.
Right.
And I'm not sure that they're all covered in those others. I scanned them this afternoon.
Well, it does not hurt us to keep the policy.
I don't think so either.
They just recommended deleting because they thought, they indicated it was repetitive. You know, I don't see any problem with leaving it there.
I'm happy to talk to Debbie Elmore or one of them to see.
Okay, so we could defer A C A to another, to another meeting once we have checked that, okay. Okay, we can do, we can follow up with that. Okay, A C B is educational equity, and they just made minor editorial revisions to this. It basically looks just like it did before. All the codes are attached, and these are things that we must do. So I recommend first reading on that. The next policy is A C E, which addresses service animals. And they just did minor editorial revisions. And we have some, I don't think there's anything in there that is specific. Is there a contact listed further down, Ms. Scott, for this program? Yes, we did insert the Executive Director of Student Support Services, but it's my understanding, Dr. Wright, that you are going to change that as well? Okay, but it will not affect first reading, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, just the contact will change?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. So that was the only thing there. The next policy is A D A. And that has, this needs to be discussed. This is not for first reading. So we will skip over that one right now and go back to it. The next one for first reading is A D B, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace in Schools. They included additional language regarding abuse assistance and rehab programs. And they added a section that addresses prescribed and over-the-counter medications, and they added the revised legal regulations. So this is fairly boilerplate as well. Please, if anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in there. I'm just going through the ones that we just really don't have a choice on. Next is A D C, which is Tobacco-Free School District. Minor editorial revisions were made. And there is a highlighted section, our current included options. And it regards marketing and sponsorship. And it just addresses parents and legal guardians, I think visitors and other members of the public are, that's the verbiage that was added, is my understanding. Otherwise, no other substantive change there. The next policy is A D D, which is for face covering, and the recommendation for, from the committee is to delete this because we defer to the current medical guidance in establishing, whether it's face masks or closings and this kind of thing. And Dr. Wright, his input was very valuable on this, and we recommend deleting A D D.
Mr. Chair, quick question. What was Dr. Wright's suggestion on that?
To delete it.
Just, and what, and what, to replace it, anything?
No, we don't need anything to replace it because we have, we always, with the pandemic, we have other policies which we're not addressing at the moment.
Sure.
That cover how Dr. Wright handles that, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And any decision that is made of that nature, of course, would involve collaboration with the nine of you, or 10 of you, and me, and the appropriate medical person.
Thanks so much, sir, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Scott, the next one that we're going to go to for first reading is B A. Okay, while she's pulling that up, B A is about Board Operational Goals. They updated our policy to the model that they suggest. It represents goals and responsibilities of the board in leadership capacity, and they included our previous goals within the new language. And this was recommended by the committee for first reading without changes. The next one would be B B, which is Board Legal Status. That was updated based on Act 262, and they revised the legal references, and that was the only substantive change. Next would be B B B, which is Board Membership and Elections, and that's updated based on Act 262. Because the legislature made the varying changes, so that encompasses that. Okay. Then we have, let's see, that's B B B. Next would be B B B A, which is Board Member Qualifications, and they just made minor editorial revisions and reorganized the formation of it, so nothing substantive. Next, we have B B B C, which is Board Member Resignations. Minor editorial revisions only. Oh, they did add additional language on the resignation process, and there is optional language regarding request for resignations, as you see in italics. And I believe the committee, and I'm having to get back because we discussed this in our first policy meeting, and someone, Dr. Wright, maybe, you've been at every meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. I do believe that the committee suggested that we include this optional verbiage for request for resignation, which reads, "Regular attendance at board meetings is essential to effective governance. If a board member engages in neglect of duty through excessive absence, the board chair will request voluntary resignation of the board member. Excessive absence is defined as missing three or more consecutive meetings without a legitimate reason," and it lists legitimate reasons, we all have reasons, "or missing more than half of the scheduled meetings held during a given school year." Now, that, of course, is up for discussion. That was a recommendation by the committee, and the option came from SCASBA. So I guess the question is, do you want to advance this for first reading, including that option? Dr. Wright, that was what we said, wasn't it? Am I wrong?
Yes, ma'am. I think that we talked about.
I read the minutes.
You all talked about sending that forth to the board, yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay, so we do recommend it with that option.
Mr. Chair, quick question. This is more of a legal question. The current board policy says "may" be treated as resignation. That says "will." Can someone just tell me what the difference is on that?
Which line are, which sentence are you looking at?
His permanent residence ceases to be in his or her voting district, a vacancy immediately created, and such change will be treated as a resignation. So it says, "Change will be treated." Current board policy says "may be treated." So are they still both suggestions? Because I'm under the assumption that "shall" is a mandate requirement, and that "will" and "may" are simply suggestive. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
I think we probably need some clarification on that, and appreciate it.
That's a legal thing. Ms. Disney.
That's not a legal thing. That's an English language thing.
All right.
Will is a command.
Your number is still up, then.
The board asked, is the board interested in pulling that particular one out of the first reading recommendations for tonight?
The B B B C, would you like to pull that one out of first reading? So that we can address that option? I think we can pull that out of first reading.
I'm not sure.
To get clarification. That's true, we can have first reading and then have the clarification for the second.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
And this one should be relatively easy because of how, what it says.
Exactly.
If you no longer live in that district, then you shouldn't be in that seat.
Okay. Right, right, okay. Moving along, B B B D, which is Board Member Removal from Office. This is the model that addresses removal from office by the governor, based on new legislation that was passed this year. The district does not currently have this policy and needs to consider adopting it because of the new legislation, and you see it cited there. So we recommended that this go forward with first reading as well. B B B E is the Unexpired Term Fulfillment and Vacancies. They made minor editorial revisions, and they added a statement regarding appointees' eligibility to run for the seat in the next election. So they clarified apparently a point that was missing, clarified it from the statute. Next, we have B C, which is Board Member Conduct. They revised the introductory paragraph and bullet points to list additional board member responsibilities. And the highlighted section is our information, and that was just where we were emphasizing.
But may I suggest?
Sure.
The attend may be virtual. So I think, I think you might better include.
Well, aren't we counted in attendance if we're here virtually?
Yes.
And we're participating and with, yeah.
Right.
Yes, are you asking for that to include virtual, use the verbiage?
I would think so we don't get in an argument later on.
Right, okay. That's easy enough to do for second reading and have that clarified. Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Disney. I made that note. Next is going to be B C A, which is the Board Member Code of Ethics. They updated the language to reflect the provisions within the South Carolina Ethic. within the South Carolina Ethics Act. Again, legalese that we had to include. We had a lot of this already in place. They just added a couple of things. Next is BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest. They added the first two paragraphs. And the paragraph regarding services and products and the section on employment and volunteering being prohibited. And they have the updated legal references. I think when we all were running and had to get on that South Carolina Ethics website, we learned a lot. And a lot of this is in there. And so they added the language, though, to meet the ethics language. Any questions on this one in particular? From the board? It clarifies a lot of questions I think some of us had had recently. And that one is recommended for first reading as well. Okay. We had already, BD. Yes. Okay, this is the organization of the board. Highlighted areas are our current information. Now, the committee discussed this. We got some information about how, from Dr. Wright specifically, about how other districts set this up, both here in South Carolina and North Carolina, where he has that experience. And the recommendation here was that the two-year term for each officer would be changed to one year. And that officers cannot serve more than two consecutive terms. That was left. It must have a break of at least two terms before being voted into that original office. And we also recommended that that be changed to one term. Was that not, is that correct, Dr. Wright? Those were my notes on that one. And I think that's the only recommendations on that one, was changing it to a one-year term to give us more flexibility. And then that can, I mean, the person can be reelected. They're not restricted. You can have two consecutive terms. So, but that way, there's more flexibility within the board. That was a recommendation of the committee. Any questions on that one? Yes.
When would that go into effect, if approved?
Well, that's a good question. How does that work? I would think it would go into effect once it's adopted. Is that not how that, any policy goes into effect? Yes. Any policy adopted would go into effect at that time. Okay, that's a good clarification. Thank you for that, Dr. Kenny. So in this case, after our current terms, in whatever capacity, then should we vote to change it to a one-year term? And having a one-term break between possibly retaking the office, all that would go into effect after our current terms.
And that would be retaking the same office? They could be elected as a different office?
Oh, yeah. It could be, you can change around from term to term. But that's talking about the same office.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. As far as the terms are regarded and considered, what is the current terms?
Current term is two.
Two years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the current term is as it reads, is two years. Okay, and we also added, on the first line, the officers now, that portion was revised at one time already to include the parliamentarian. And so it should read vice chair, secretary, and parliamentarian. And then in the next policy, it will address the duties. But the first line reads vice chair, secretary, and parliamentarian. We already addressed that part at the beginning. I think that was in February, maybe, January, February. That was already changed. This was what they sent us. So it doesn't include the change that we already made to the policy. So that change was already made. Right, we can clean up the verbiage. Yes. Not a problem. Okay. I want to make sure, I'm making notes so that the second reading looks correct. Okay, the only, that was the only part of that policy that had any changes. Okay, we are now going, the BDR dash R. Right, right. I'll clean up the verbiage. Right. Okay, on this one, there were a lot of changes that were initially recommended on this as far as since we added the parliamentarian. However, after doing further research, all of those changes were not necessary. The only two duties, under the duties of chair, excuse me, that would move to parliamentarian would be to restrict discussion to the question when a motion is before the board and answer all parliamentary inquiries referring questions of legality to the board attorney. Those are the only two that, based on research, would, should be pulled and put under the parliamentarian's specific duties. All the rest still lay with the chair. There were other recommendations. And like I said, the research showed that they should stay where they are, aside from those two changes. And so moving those two duties to the parliamentarian, duties which is further down. And this is, the be knowledgeable, advises the presiding officers on matters of procedure. And this says, the parliamentarian should be seated next to the presiding officer. That is a recommendation that's used for other things. But that's not something that we actually need to include that verbiage because that's just, that's for, it's not needed. So we recommend that you strike that sentence because it's not necessary.
Well, in most, in most cases, that's really the order. But because of the logistics in this room.
Exactly.
It creates a problem.
Yes, and it's not, we've not had an issue.
Because we really don't have, we don't have a whole lot of room here. In the State House chamber, the parliamentarian sits right behind the speaker. Not to either side, but right behind the speaker. So whenever there's an issue related to rules, the speaker simply turns to the parliamentarian and gets the rule from the parliamentarian because of the closeness of their vicinity to each other.
Yes, and in other statewide meetings I've been in, yeah.
About seat of authority, but a seat of convenience.
Yes, exactly.
But, but we.
It's not convenient in our setup and that's, yeah.
One of the things in the long run we've got to do in this district is get a larger conference room, a boardroom because there are too many events here. We need a bigger space.
Yes, yeah. But for purposes of clarity in the policy, I think we can strike that sentence because we don't seem to be having a problem. And I, you know, it's just not necessary for it to say that the parliamentarian be seated next to the chair.
Okay.
Okay? And that was all for that. Okay. We're almost done. Three meetings covered a lot of territory. But BDD is the board superintendent relationship. There were minor revisions, editorial revisions and updates to the responsibilities of the board and the superintendent. And it included things like adoption of school standards, textbooks, and calendar under board responsibilities. And they're listed out here. And everything seemed to be in order and accurate. And Dr. Wright said that this was appropriate as well. We didn't see any problem with the recommendation. So we recommend it for first reading as well. BDE, which is the board, or R, BDE, is the committees. They just highlighted these sections for our benefit, for whatever reason, I don't know. But everything is within FOIA compliance on committees, how you appoint the standing committees, the special committees. And confidentiality and conflict of interest is in there now. I was just reading a notation here from SCASBA that is not relevant. Now, we did establish in the committee that confidentiality and conflict of interest in the executive session. Well, committees don't do executive sessions. It's not recommended that committees have executive sessions. And so Dr. Wright suggested that we strike that first sentence because it's irrelevant. We don't do executive sessions and it is frowned upon for committees to do that anyway. So that sentence is not necessary. And he recommended it be removed. And there's one other in the BD. R, yeah. It was also just to strike that sentence as it applied to committees. I'm sorry, BDER, Ms. Scott, that was my error. I misspoke. But that was the only thing in BDER, was that one sentence too because committees do not do work sessions, thank you. Executive sessions. Okay, BDFR, Advisory Committees, School Improvement Councils. This policy establishes the basic structure for advisory committees in the district. It's included in the rules so that the board may add additional advisory committees as needed. We did not currently have this policy. And they suggest that we do have this policy on the books. We're on BDE, I'm sorry. No, this says BDF, I'm sorry, BDF. Yes, advisory committees, there you go. General guidelines, and they have the codes there. So, and we didn't have this. And it is in code. So we recommend that we adopt this as they recommended. And it does give us some leeway as to being able to form advisory committees as needed. Okay, BDG, Board Attorney and Legal Services, that's for executive session. And that was listed on the agenda as such. BDH is Board Consultants. Minor editorial revisions. They added those bullets on consultant services. But that was the only thing that was changed. Yeah, that was the only revision on that one. Okay, BE, Board Meetings. This is recommended for discussion. Not for first reading, so I'm going to save that for the end, Ms. Scott. BEC is executive sessions and open meetings. They expanded the information on matters permitted during executive session. They expanded the information on voting method for executive sessions, which is none. And they added a section prohibiting the use of recording devices during executive session. And they revised the legal references on this policy as well. The only addition suggested is agendas for executive session. Perhaps that's something that we could discuss, is adding a set agenda for our executive sessions to make them more streamlined and more focused and more productive. Yes, ma'am?
As we well know, when we had our professional development, September 16th, the law firm recommended that.
Yes, that's one reason we wanted to add that is the attorneys strongly suggested that it was a very good idea to have agendas for executive sessions. So we would like to add this to this policy that the executive sessions would have an agenda to be adhered to.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add a quick question. I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, aside from the legalities of it, as far as a practical perspective, I've talked to quite a few board chairmen at other boards across the state. And they highly recommend, they have this in their policy manual. And they say it is extremely helpful. And so to limit our, the whole point was to limit our time in there so we're out here discussing public matters in public.
Exactly, exactly.
Anyway, I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
And that, and as it is now, you know, we are required by FOIA to give the generalities of what's to be discussed in executive session. But if we actually devise from those things, because we know what we need to talk about from time, from one meeting to the next, is to actually set an agenda for the executive session and adhere to that. And as Mr. Zell pointed out, the attorneys recommended that and many school districts do that. And they say it has helped them immensely since they implemented that policy. So we would like to add verbiage to this one for second reading that would reflect an agenda in executive session.
And Mr. Chair, I don't, it's, Mr. Chair, it's not that we don't have an agenda for executive session as it's. for executive session as it stands today. We have an agenda, it's just broad.
Right.
And going back to the latter part, I don't want this to be missed, the latter part of what Ms. Wright said, what Ms. White said, it's a very specific agenda that is the recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, next is, uh, BEDF, and this is the last one for first reading recommendation. The voting method at board meetings. They added a section on members with a conflict of interest recusing themselves from the vote. And they added procedure for circumstances when the board chair makes or seconds a motion. So there was a little bit of substance there, um, that they changed. I'm looking at the, um. One thing that stood out to me is, um, the representation by proxy of any member of the board at any time, there is none. We don't do proxies. Um, and, uh, the presiding officer has the option of speaking to, offering and seconding motions and voting on all items of business. If the chair makes or seconds a motion, the vice chair will act as presiding officer until the vote is concluded. So if our chairman so chooses, as is his right, then in this circumstance, Ms. Disney would preside over that vote.
Right.
That way you, you know, retain your right to have a voice as well when necessary. So the, um, the method for it is in place. So those are all of the policies that we recommend for first reading, um, when, under our action items for tonight. There were, um, a couple that needed discussion. If you would like to do that tonight, we can do that, I'm prepared for that. Um, if you would like to defer because of the length of the meeting, the policy committee would not object.
Could we, could we possibly, Madam Chair, hold those for the next meeting?
More than happy to, more than happy to, I, I am tired of talking.
If the board would agree with me, we could, we would, we, we could consent to that tonight.
Yes.
Okay, we will bring those back and we will just have that discussion, um, on those perhaps at the next work session. And, but tonight, the policies that we went over, we do recommend for first reading tonight.
Yes, that's, that's wonderful, okay. Thank you, that was a very extensive report, very extensive.
But we had to cover three policy meetings, so sorry.
Very good, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other committee reports, recommendations? If not, with, uh, item four, the superintendent's report, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, uh, we're gonna begin with, uh, item 4.1. I'll ask, uh, Dr. Jayden McLeod and Dr. Lamont Moore to come forward. Uh, we will share the information that we can at this point concerning, uh, the 2022, 2023 test scores. We will bring to this board an additional report once everything is released. That will be much more comprehensive, uh, than what you're hearing tonight. But, uh, I think some of you were, uh, clamoring to, to hear some information tonight based on, um, a, a very, uh, very good news article, by the way, uh, that talked about our scores improving. So we'll get some basic information tonight, but just want the board to know that, uh, we will be providing comprehensive data once it is available to you.
Good evening again. I'm going to let, um, Dr. Moore begin with the overview of the South Carolina Ready, the EOC and the career readiness data that is available at this point.
All right, good evening, everyone, again. This is just an overview, like Dr. Wright and Dr. McLeod said, of our South Carolina Ready, our EOC and our career readiness data. So, uh, just as we're getting started, I just want to talk about where this data is found. Uh, very simply, if we move to the next slide, there are two websites that we have included for you to use as your reference. Um, the first one is the, uh, Report Card website. And I did put a note in there that please note that the 22, uh, 23 data, 2023 data will not be available on this particular website until after October 10th. After October 10th, that information will be made for, available to the public. You'll also find on this slide another link that will take you to the State Department of Education's test data website, where you would see a lot of different, um, test scores for districts and schools. So that's where you can find this data and we will kind of dig into a lot of it in tonight's presentation. So, the next slide just talks about how we will view this data today. We will be looking at the assessments as stated, South Carolina Ready and of course, in career readiness. The subject areas that we want to cover are ELA or English Language Arts, math, science and history. And the levels that we will be looking at are at the state level, the district level. And for the South Carolina Ready assessment, we want to share grade level information for you. So, jumping right into it for the South Carolina Ready, uh, we're gonna take a look at the state and district level view of how our students have performed. In this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023 data, we increased in proficiency in English Language Arts on the South Carolina Ready. So on this chart, you'll see in blue, uh, the 2022 scores for our district on the left side of the slide. And in orange, you'll see the 2023 scores for our district. And we're, again, we're looking at percent met or exceeded. So these are the students that met the expectation or exceeded the expectation for 2022 and 2023. On the right side of the slide, you'll see the state, uh, proficiencies for 2022 in blue and 2023 in orange. For the next slide, you'll see South Carolina Ready Math. So when comparing 2022 scores, proficiency scores to 2023 data, we increased in math proficiency in math on the South Carolina Ready assessment. On the right side of the slide, you will see the same information for 2022 and 23 for the state averages. The next slide will take a look at Science. South Carolina Ready Science, and you may be familiar with hearing the South Carolina Pass Assessment. Now it's called South Carolina Ready Science. This assessment is only given to fourth and sixth grade students. So just to make sure that you understand that note as of clarity as well. In 2022 compared to 2023, we increased in proficiency in Science on the South Carolina Ready Science Assessment. And of course, on the left side, you'll note that the state, the state average declined in Science, although in Sumter School District, the state proficiency increased. The next slide will take you into a deeper look for South Carolina Ready into grade levels. Of course, South Carolina Ready, that assessment assesses grades three, four, five, six, seven and eight. So upper elementary and middle school students. This slide shows you how each grade level performed as compared to the 2022 performance. And in this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023 data, we increased in proficiency in English Language Arts on every grade level.
Say that again, Dr. Moore.
2022 to 2023, Sumter School District increased in proficiency for the South Carolina Ready Test in English Language Arts in every grade level.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, just a quick question. If I were looking at this independent of your conversation, would I readily know that this represents our district? Cause you said that the dis, we increased, would I know this from, on this particular chart?
Well, this is, yes, this is for South, for Sumter School District.
This, this one, all of it?
So, previously, we com, did state comparisons.
Uh huh.
This one is just district to district. So, twen, the, in blue, you'll see the 2022 for Sumter School District. In orange, you'll see 2023 for Sumter School District. So this particular slide compares our performance against ourselves for 2022 versus 2023.
Mrs. Johnson's point, we might want to go back and, and put that in the heading.
I think so.
Just, you know, put a logo up there or something, uh, so that way we can own the data. Thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll make sure we add that so that it's clear that we're making a district to district comparison.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have a quick question. Um, based on a presentation we had earlier tonight with Title I and expectations that you have to meet with Title I. And I'm just picking one here, third grade, because we all know third grade is so very important as far as reading. We are meeting the standard for Title I at 35.2? That's a question. Are we? That falls within the requirement? I mean, I, I, this is a some I don't know, so, we just heard this tonight, so.
You have to consider that third grade, that was the grade that would have been in kindergarten when March 13th occurred. So they went the rest of their kindergarten year. This is possibly the most impacted group. So they are getting the most, um, intervention at this time. But they are going to be the ones that we are going to continue to have to put so much extra effort into, to be able to help them rebound from this.
Because their formative time was spent in COVID.
Exactly, so they spent that whole first grade not face to face with teachers. And then a good bit of their second grade without being face to face with the teacher. And we have seen the impact of not having face to face instruction with our students.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, this means that Act 388 is going to hit us hard this coming summer, isn't it? Would you like to explain to them what's happening?
Act 388 requires that our students have to be able to, um, read at grade level or they are required, um, to attend summer reading camp for extra, um, instructional time. And they have to meet requirements by the end of that reading camp or they're required for retention.
All right, moving on, the next slide will, um, take a look at math for South Carolina Ready. Again, you'll see grades three through eight on this slide. And then of course, on the far right side, you will see, um, overall. And in this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023 district data, we increased in proficiency in math on South Carolina Ready for every grade level.
Can you tell me why there's such a dip? Do we know yet?
It's hard to find math teachers. Especially as you go up the grade levels. If you can find me Algebra I teachers, I would get very excited.
We're team, teaming here, don't, isn't it? Yeah, it's the teacher that makes the biggest impact.
Absolutely.
All right, the next slide will give you information about South Carolina Ready Science. And remember, South Carolina Ready Science looks at grades four and six. So on the next slide, you will see grades four and six. Same comparisons in blue, 2022, percent met or exceeding. In orange, 2023, you'll see that for fourth grade, we showed an increase in proficiency. And in sixth grade, there was a dip in proficiency for 2023. Overall, we showed an increase, uh, when we looked at the district average from 2022 to 2023 in science.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna venture a guess that, cause I know, science teachers, sixth grade, right? Big demand, okay.
All right, the next slide is we'll take a look at the end of course assessment, state and district comparisons. In this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023 data, we decreased in proficiency in Algebra I on the end of course. The state average for Algebra I also increased. Decreased, yes.
Mr. Chair, a quick question, is there a correlation for this? Is it math teachers across the state are in high demand? Did the curriculum change at all? So is the teacher shortage?
Verifying the vacancy numbers, but if my numbers are correct, that is the impact of seven Algebra I vacancies last year.
Overall, our answer to the question is yes. It's, uh, math teachers are really at a shortage nationwide, but particularly in Southeastern United States. Yes, sir.
The next slide will show end of course assessment for Biology I. And in this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023 data, we decreased in proficiency in Biology I on the end of course. And the state average for Biology I also decreased.
Mr. Chair, how, how are we doing with biology teachers?
The sciences and the maths are the most difficult to fill.
All right, the next slide will take you to end of course for English II. In this slide, you will see that when comparing 2022 to 2023, we increased in proficiency in English II on the end of course assessment. As compared, and of course, you see the state comparisons on the right side. And the final slide for EOC is US History and Constitution. And of course, in this slide, you'll see the, so same comparisons. We increased in proficiency in US History on the EOC. And you see, of course, the state averages on the right side of the slide. We'll take a brief look at the Career Readiness Assessment data. In blue, you will see how our district performed and the state performed in 2022. Students earning a Level III or higher on Career Readiness Assessments. These assessments indicate whether or not students are career ready. In red, you'll see the, the amount of students earning a III or higher on, uh, for 2023. Now, there is a note at the bottom, the state did change the Career Readiness Assessment in 2022. We used the ACT Work Keys Assessment. In 2023, we used the WIN Career Assessment. And that was a state decision to switch mid-year. And so, you see the comparisons, but just so as a disclaimer, these are two different career readiness assessments.
All right. What are we, what do we do day to day to help with this readiness? I mean, is there a core? I mean, is there a course? Is there, do we just ask counselors to tell them to, you know?
The main two components are the Algebra I and the English II. So you can see the impact of that Algebra I, um, how it directly impacts their readiness, along with the soft skills. And we do work on that through the CTE courses as well as, you know, in the high schools. But that Algebra I is making a direct impact, you can see the direct correlation to it.
And students normally take this assessment as eleventh graders in the spring. If they score less than three on any part of the test, they are given the opportunity to retake it as twelfth graders in the fall. And any new twelfth graders that come who did not have the opportunity to take the test as eleventh graders, they also get a second chance in the spring to take the assessment. So students are given multiple opportunities to take the test. And then between our career specialists and our school staff have a career, have a Career Readiness Platform that they can use to provide support for those students in the areas that they did not score three. So there's CourseWare that they can actually log into to get the practice that they need before they take the second, uh, attempt on the assessment.
Mr. Chair, I have a clarifying question. Is that mandatory or optional, the latter? The, working with the guidance counselors with those programs to help those students, perhaps?
Yes, so they, the, the students are supposed to be working with, with them on the CourseWare. And taking it, again, so if they get, if they get a less than a three, they are required to take that test a second time.
So in terms of the extra, the curriculum that is there, I don't know if it's called curriculum, that is there to help them improve in those areas, is that mandatory or optional?
It's not mandatory, but it is very highly recommended. And we, we use all strategies available to, um, highly recommend that they participate. In fact, our career specialists have been meeting with parents for the last two weeks for all of these students that did not reach the minimum of three to encourage them participating and to ensure that the parents, as well as the students, understand the importance of earning at least a Level Three and what that impact is as they're leaving the high schools and moving out into the workforce or onto college. So we are putting a great deal of effort in that at the high schools because it's our duty to make sure they are college or career-ready.
And when are students given this opportunity? Like, are they, I know they're not pulled from class, or this, so what does that look like?
We have extended day. Some of the high schools are doing Saturday workshops. Also, um, we have, you know, our students like to have late arrival, early dismissal. That does not happen if they have not met the requirements of being college or career-ready. So that's usually a, um, a big incentive for our students to meet one of these objectives, which this is one way to do that. And they also have time within the day that's built in. Some do tutoring to get one of these checked off. So we're tracking, we have a new system that we're putting into place now also to be able to easily track our students, um, whether they've met one of the eight criteria to be college and/or career-ready. So the counselors, the career specialists, along with the administration, can easily see where the children are to be able to better guide them in their journey through their pathways in the high schools.
Chair, just a question, I'm, I'm just curious, why can't we make it mandatory? Off of Ms. Johnson, is there, you said you highly suggest. Why can't we just make it mandatory for all students to do it?
We could build it into curriculum, but we'd have to write policy and...
So we can if we wanted to?
There's possibility.
Today, I'm sorry about my voice, but today, as we were in Kershaw at the Technical High School, we heard several times that they do really push the soft skills. And it's just, it comes naturally, you know, because those kids know they're going to be applying for a job if they're learning that particular skill. And he just mentioned many times that they do well with the soft skills. I know we have a career center and I know they push that. So those kids probably are more apt to be exposed to the direct teaching of soft skills. Is that, you think so? You think I'm on the right path here?
Yes, we teach those during, in our CTE courses.
Right, right. Our career center, you know, Dr. Shari Miller, I know that they push those.
Yes, they, we teach those in all of our career centers. But as far as doing the actual complete software package that Dr. Moore was referring to, that's not necessarily, they go on the computer and complete that entire software package. But portions of it are in all of our CTE CourseWare.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, it's off, uh, it's an extension of Ms. Johnson's question. Historically, when we do remedial intervention or highly suggesting that we, we go through and use these, these, this software and whatever tools to your, your disposal, what sort of rebound, how can I ask it? What sort of rebound improvements do we see on that second test? Does that make sense how I asked it?
The students usually do a good bit better. Some of it is just being more familiar with the test. And see, we've moved from one test to another. We did that test one year and then the state turned around and changed the test again. So just being, the familiarity of the test helps. And that's, yes, exactly.
If we're closing up here, just one question. Are there any standout schools specifically that you saw the greatest improvement in? Have we looked at that?
Mr. Chair, I got, uh, kind of on that, I did that actually, especially in the English fourth grade. And my suggestion, you need to go talk to High Hills. They almost went twenty percent increase in, in their fourth grade. And that was a huge, and that's what helped drive them up. So High Hills is doing something right, uh, because right now, these are dismal. I mean, scores overall are just horrible. I mean, state is horrible, but we're not even close. I mean, a four-point-five percent increase is not, we shouldn't be excited about. So I think we need to keep, keep chugging along, uh, improvement, but we need to get better scores fast. But like you said, uh, High Hills, if we're not talking to them out to High Hills, there's something wrong, because they did something right.
Yes, we've looked deeper into that, but we also need to hire teachers.
True, but our, our scores are very close.
We have to have teachers in the classroom to teach.
I think there's no but to that, we have to hire teachers.
Well, we already look at my suggestion because of the science. We know our biggest, I keep jumping on, on Dr. Coomans about our science, how, how many we, that's our biggest one that we, we need, and we haven't got any science teachers. So, but the big thing is, of course, is the code of conduct, making sure and enforcing. We don't have these fights and going on in the schools. That is causing some of this stuff. So there's a lot to it, it's just not the, just the teachers, there's a lot more to it that needs to get done.
Mr. Chair, um, I would just like to say, I agree that we do still have some work to do. However, I don't think that that should negate the fact that in some areas, our scores increased. And if we're comparing ourselves to ourselves right now to try to increase, I think that that is commendable. I think we do need to look at and figure out what is it that helped us to increase those scores and build upon that? But I don't want anyone to think that, by any stretch of imagination, that to me, to me, that everything is dismal. Because there were some increases. And I think that our students and our teachers need to be commended for that and figure out how we can build on that to get even better.
Mr. Chair, I know you're tired, but I, the English teachers have been bombarded with a new program. Isn't that correct? Letters. Are we getting the proper amount of professional development? I mean, those people have to sleep too.
Yes, ma'am.
And, but, you know, now we have a new program, it seems like every year or so we have a new something you're throwing at them. Do you, or do you find that letters is going to make a big difference? That emphasis on phonics? Do you feel like there's going to be a jump?
Yes, we're already seeing with first cohort of teachers that have, um, they're almost finishing their two-year training. You're starting to see that those foundational reading skills are making the difference with these smaller children. And you're seeing the reading progress and the fluency is building much faster. So we're seeing that trend start to occur. So we are, um, that group will be completely finished. They're becoming more mentorship towards the newer teachers coming into place. And the second cohort will be finishing in May. In fact, our district is the only district that felt the need for all of our elementary teachers to have that training and be using the same curriculum. We're the only one in the state. And it's already starting to reap the benefits of doing that. Because we saw where our children were when they, because they didn't have that beginning, they missed those critical years not being face-to-face for that reading instruction.
I don't want to insult anybody, but unfortunately, in the education business, everything is an acronym. I didn't say letters like what you write to a, a friend. This, the acronym is a, is what our State Superintendent of Education has adopted, is a type of program. And it's not the kind of letters you write in a, you know, classroom, so.
Yes, ma'am. It's based on the science of reading. It's very, um, very heavily research-based.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to reemphasize what Ms. Johnson said. While we are not where we want to be, there's nobody in this room or in this district that would argue that we need improvement. But I do feel that we do need to emphasize and recognize that there has been improvement. And what you're, what we were dealing with during the time, the effect that COVID had, especially on the young children. Um, and looking at the teenagers, I think we are seeing problems, conduct problems because of what happened during COVID and them not being socialized as much. So I do want to recognize that while, yes, we are, the state has a long way to go. We have further to go, but we are making the right steps, thank you.
I, I don't want to get into the debate, defray one way or the other. But I re, I recall when there used to be so much discussion about data. Is that conversation still going on in the, in each local school? And are they really taking the time to analyze the data from the scores, et cetera, process it? And, and, and self-correct, if that's a good word, I don't know whether that's a good word, uh, the whole process. Is, is that a, and I suspect that are they calling on you guys, the, the DO, to provide some assistance as they, uh, they discover their areas of weakness? What's, what's, what's going on there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. In fact, we meet monthly with the principals and have those discussions with them. And then teams from my office go into the schools, um, minimum of monthly, working with the different groups. And we've restructured so that we have elementary and secondary teams that can better focus. And that is their areas of strength that are going in and working with the leadership teams and the teacher teams themselves.
And, and are the coaches still in the schools and, uh, supporting and assisting the administration?
Yes, sir, we also, we also train coaches every, every month and go in and support them while they support their teachers in their schools also.
Thank you. Thank you for this update, we'll look for more in October.
Sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, while we're transitioning to four-point-two, I'd like to take a one-minute, since this is called a superintendent's report. I, I just want to say publicly, because I want to be clear. We, we've got some people working really hard out here in our schools every day. We've got some amazing teachers who are doing more than their fair share to try to move things forward. So I want to use the words satisfied versus pleased to describe the superintendent's viewpoint. We're certainly not satisfied with where we are academically. We've got a lot of work to do, we still want to move forward and do better. And we're determined to do so. If you go and talk to folks inside of school, they want children to learn and get better. So we're not satisfied, but we are pleased. We are pleased with the fact that we can honestly say, if you look at all of the testing that we've done and all of the adversity that we've faced and all of the vacancies that we have, student achievement is improving in Sumter School District. And so for that, we're pleased. And now it's time for four-point-two. Revision of Policy J I C J. For the pleasure of the Board tonight, I just wanted to simply say, and this really transpired, uh, Mrs. White, since the last Policy Committee meeting. Chief of Staff, uh, Chief of Schools, Dr. Sherla Gamble and I have witnessed an uptick, if you will, in children or someone. We believe that it is probably some of our precious students. They are videoing activities that are happening within our school building and choosing to create and post things before we get the opportunity to deal with it. Upon learning of this information, I did what any good superintendent would normally do. And I looked at our policy that addresses, uh, videoing and posting things without receiving permission. And needless to say, Policy J I C J, as it is written currently for the Sumter School District, does not adequately give us the opportunity to address issues with, with students doing that as we need to. We're, we're not condoning things that are inappropriate happening in schools. But we do need to have the opportunity to address it. And this video transmission should not disturb or create additional situations for us to then have to deal with. So my recommendation is that you, you see some other policies from other districts that are kind of similar to what we would like to do. The plan is, uh, Dr. Gamble and I are going to get together and create a draft, if you will, of J I C J. We'd like to present that at the October sixteenth meeting to this Board for recommendation, for review and approval. We understand that normally, uh, we would do this through Policy Committee and that process. But this is a bit of an urgent matter that we'd like to get on top of. So that, that's all I had tonight. I wanted you all to look at some sample policies. We've got some of our preferred districts, at least in the minds of some, and their policy and how they address it, as well as some, some neighboring districts. We want to get something that works together for us. We'll get it vetted with S C S B A and our attorneys prior to the meeting on the sixteenth. But just wanted to inform the board. That's all I had for that tonight. We're not ready to present anything other than just let you know. And to let the general public know that we know that folks are creating special sites. I've got many of the people in the, in the back of the room working on finding out who's dealing, doing it. And we're doing what we can, but we will be recommending a, a policy update of sorts to address that.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Dr. Wright, I will be interested to see, I know this came up since our policy meeting.
That's correct.
I also received notification today that SCASBA dropped J on us today and with revisions.
Sure.
So it'll be interesting to see if they recommended any of these other revisions to our existing policy.
Yes, ma'am. It, it may, it may be in there. I, I have not had time to personally review that. But um, th- this behavior, although it's a first for me in this district, typically, superintendents will ask boards of trustees for special review for things that are creating, I'll use the word challenges. Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Dr. Wright.
Yes, sir.
For clarification, you all are not just looking at this policy because you are seeing a, or because we're trying to address recording of different things inside of the school, right? You're looking at this because cell phones in itself can be an actual distraction.
That, that is correct. And the disruption that they cause for current activity as well as future activity. Yes, sir. It, it, it's a conglomerate, conglomerate reasons for us wanting to do that. Yes, sir. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, sir. All right, and then.
You still?
Uh, we, we're going to get an update from instructional technology at this point from our executive director of I T, Mr. Arpad Jonas.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Canty, vice chairwoman, Disney distinguished members of the board. Chanty, can you please set up the mirror cast for me? It is my pleasure, we, I'm sorry about that, this evening to show you a presentation about I T equipment. Before I jump into the I T equipment presentation, I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about what the information systems and technology department is doing in this district as a whole, to give you a, a, a big overview. Our department is responsible for all the cables and connections in this district. So every end device, desktops, cameras, uh, switches, all these cables that connect our schools and creates this entire district and network is, is a lot of cables and connections. So all our schools are connected with fiber, all our endpoint devices are cabled. And we have, of course, a large number of wireless-enabled connections. The second part that we're responsible for is the network. The network is a big infrastructure of connections, firewalls, which is secure devices, wireless access points, like I mentioned. And these all connect all the instructional, all the students, all the teachers to be able to perform instruction. The third part is that we handle in this district is CIPA compliance, which is through internet. CIPA compliance is a federal law. It's the shortcut for Children Internet Protection Act. So we have several filters in place to ensure that children are protected against viewing any inappropriate content. So the experience on a network, on a school network, looking at anything that you look, it's totally different compared to an experience that you may have at home. Because we look at all the traffic and we take out all the inappropriate content. We accomplish this with several filtering appliances. And lastly, we handle security. Security in our district is an eight-layer application. It starts with training the end user, what are the red, red flags? We do security through firewall. We do security through endpoint clients. When we install the endpoint client on all the devices. And we do, like I mentioned, a total of eight layers in this district. The second part that we handle is servers, storage and virtualization, network virtualization. So the, the, the transformation in I T in the past five to 10 years was the largest than, than 50 years before. We reduced our server environment from physical servers to mostly virtual servers. So in the past, you used to have one physical server for each server you had today. Today, you can install on one physical server, depending on, on the setting and capacity and storage and memory. You can install up to 100 virtual servers and you're spending money only on one physical server. So we have one of these, we migrated, we started about 10 years ago to reduce this scale. And we migrated from roughly 120 physical servers to less than 25. And we are not stopping. We're reducing this slowly as we can. Storage is a big part that we handle. I'm sorry. We have several applications that handle storage. So in our school district, all staff has a designed home folder where they can save their stuff. And we back this information up to make sure that it's never lost. So on top of that, we have a lot of applications that store a lot of data. We have surveillance that, videos that we save and we keep for approximately 25 to 30 days. So we handle all, all, all these aspects. The next part that we handle is user access. So we have approximately, right now, a little bit less than 15,000 students and approximately 3,000 staff members. They use different applications. They use email. They use a lot of instructional content. They use Power School. They use, so we handle in, as a whole. S S O, by the way, stands for single sign-on. And we started about seven to 10 years ago to implement this technology because we realized that, you know, teachers are using more than 15 applications and they had 15 different user accounts. It's kind of hard to manage all that. So we started this initiative to, to consolidate everything. So today, we reduced this footprint significantly. Today, I can access only with my Gmail account approximately seven or eight applications that we did in-house with that same username and password, without even typing in my password. It just syncs my account and opens the application that I need to use. So mostly, we use two of these. One of them is Google and one of them is Active Directory. So, and when we look at an application today, we, we understand that the technology changed. And this, if this application doesn't support a single sign-on, I'm not sure if we want it. So we started that to improve this user experience. When I say information systems, I'm talking about generally this, this entire mesh that doesn't have only these parts. An information system is a whole that we manage. And the most important part of this information system is that we have disaster recovery solution for this. So, uh, I'm not sure if you know about ransomware. Ransomware is something that came up in the last three to five, over 55 years. And it's the most dangerous virus that is out there. There is no real protection against it. A single protection against, to protect an information sys- system against ransomware is to have a complete backup in ta- of your entire system. Because the question is not when you get hit, it's how hard you get hit and, and how much time do you need to recover? So this is something that we invested a lot of time, a lot of money and time in the last five years to make sure that we are ready. Operating systems and application delivery. This is a very important part that we handle. The operating systems change very frequently. Three years ago, we used Windows seven, then we went to 10, now we're at 11. Applications also change and update drastically. So we use systems that deliver these applications on our network automated. We just create some policies, change the packages and push these out. So we handle all that for, for all the endpoint devices. And lastly, the today's presentation is number eight. We do handle all the hardware and offer support services for all this hardware. So this is the, the, the presentation for number eight. I just wanted to kind of let you guys know what the information systems and technology team does here at Sumter School District as, you know, as, at a glance. So I'm going to jump in on, on, on number eight. This is a, a high-level overview of roughly the, the, the hardware and what we support. We have approximately four, 400 switches. We have 1,885 access points. Currently, we have approximately 4,000 desktops, 2,000 laptops, 880 printers, 19,000 homebooks, 1,460 active panels. I added the copiers here because we support the copiers and we work on them and we monitor them. But the copiers are not owned by us. We lease these copiers. We have a contract with, with a company. And, but we work on them constantly and we have full inventory of all of these copiers. And of course, we manage software on these. Teachers in our district can use their badges to log into these copiers and release their jobs. We have roughly 280 servers, virtual servers. Our schools, each of our schools has only one server. And they have four virtual servers on these, each of these schools. We also handle ID cards. ID cards are mandatory in our school system. Staff, staff uses it because they can access doors and they use it for the copiers. And student ID cards have, in elementary, have a QR code badge and they use it to log into their homebooks. And student, students in middle and high school, they have their, they have a, a, one, it's not a QR code. It's a barcode that we put on that is used in the, currently in the, in the library for book checkout. And from next year, we sit down and we're trying to use that code for lunch and eliminate the lunch numbers. That's the working process. So in total, like I mentioned, we have roughly 20,000 users. And we also handle the surveillance cameras and access control. This was recently added in our pool and we ju, we're just about wrapping up this huge project that we started. Because the analog cameras in the past were under maintenance and we all realize that camera and surveillance today is, 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 is an I T task. And we took this task and we're about completing this project. At all schools, we're working on the last two or three. We have today 1,744 cameras and roughly about 150 access control units. And this is an on, ongoing project. Now I presented a, a bi-location overview. These are the cameras bi-location. Ellie's Drive is the first one. This, this is an alphabetical list of, of all the schools and how many cameras. As you see, larger schools, we see more cameras. Like at Sumter High School, we have 256 cameras. At the other two high schools, we have, you know, Lakewood and Crestwood are exact copy of the layout. So they have the same number of cameras. And then as we go to, you know, the bigger schools, Bates Middle went a little over because of the outside cameras that we had to put in addition because of the geographical layout. Peter Crest. And then we have smaller locations like, uh, Rathen Peak where we have 35 cameras. This is the number of intercoms and access control units. Every school has a, an intercom at the main entrance. We installed these to prevent access in the past. This project started with the intercoms. The first layer was, we just went to every school and we installed an intercom because we wanted the front door to be closed at all times so visitor access is controlled. Then we went back as a second, uh, it was the second time and I spoke with all the principals and we determined all the doors that are frequently used. For example, teacher parking lots, children going out, playing, the kinder, kindergarten children to the, um, to the yard and coming back. So we isolated the traffic doors that are heavily used. And these are the number of intercoms that are at all schools. And we're, we're circling back with, with the third wave where we're going to determine the next needs and continue this project. These are, these are the numbers of active panels at each location. You see the, the, Sumter High School has 123, the Crestwood High 73, Lakewood 71. So by, depending on the number, these are only mainly 95% in, in teacher classrooms. We put some in conference rooms to help with professional development for smaller groups. But most, most of these are in, in teacher classrooms with, with small exceptions. We do have some on mobile card at all of the locations for, to help with P D. Some of these are also used when a panel fails. These panels, sometimes we cannot repair the same day. Sometimes it takes apart or in, in many cases, we even have to replace them. So some of these mobile cards that we have are used to, you know, loan this mobile card to the teacher until we are able to resolve the issue. This is a, a small graph of the active, active panels by version. The version seven is the newest, version five is about four, four years old. And version one is the oldest version that we have. We have approximately 450 of these. So these went out, out of warranty approximately three to four years ago. We had two batches. And we extended the life of these. Typically, I T departments don't keep equipment like this out of warranty. It's very rare. This happened to us kind of in the middle of the pandemic. There were problems with the supply chain. Some of the models, I was told, a new model is coming out. Sounds like, why, why, why a model five when seven is coming out? I'm buying now 450 version fives. And then next month, they come out with version seven and I'm losing out. So we kind of waited to see what happens. Then we met with a few companies. We tested some different panels and we put in, put together a replacement plan. And I'll show you how a replacement plan is. So typically for all these changes and everything that we do, we have a, a, a plan. And this plan is outlining what equipments we have at each school. It has a master sheet. Uh, for example, at Vocata, I have twenty-four active panel versions, uh, ones. I have five version fives and I have seven version threes. And this plan in detail, it gives me the serial number per room, is it used for, uh, for a teacher, is it mounted, is it a mobile board, uh, and the room numbers. And we keep this typically up, sorry, this inventory up and, and for each replacement plan, we create a document like this. Now, I'll just browse through a little, uh, through some schools with some totals. Oakland has ten. Adult Education has nine, none of them are recommended for replacement. The Career Center has, uh, doesn't have version ones, so we don't recommend any replacement. Lakewood has thirty-seven. Santa High doesn't have any version ones, so we don't have any recommendations there. Ellis Drive Middle has twenty-eight. Ellis Drive Elementary, there are fourteen. Bates, only three. So, this, really roughly, it's a detailed inventory of, of, of the active panels at each schools. And we have one for, for everything, for cameras, for access controls, for wifi, uh, and most of them except this one. This is one, the reason I showed, uh, showed the board this one because I mentioned at one point that we have live inventory. The other systems are modern. This is because it's an older version board. At that time, we didn't have cloud management. The cameras are on a cloud management type of thing, that you can log in and see them. The wireless access points, they can s- be all seen in the dashboard. And it says, you know, from one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three functional, two down. So, these are recording live. This, this is the, the single case where we don't have a live one, and that's why I want to show this. These are the access control, the number of access control doors that are currently operating at the schools that can be opened by staff. This is the number of the wireless access points per school. Uh, the number here, again, as you see, is very close between Crestwood and High School. Uh, the number of these, uh, it is depending on the, on the size of the school and on, on the footprint that we need to cover. So, I'll show you here, for example, this is Lakewood. And this is a map with each access point. Where we see a red, green dot, that is an access point. As you see, each classroom has an access point. So, the density of these access points to deliver, uh, instruction with the proper bandwidth and speeds, we have to put one in each classroom. Especially with the one-to-one, uh, before, about ten years ago, we used to have only, uh, access points in the hallways. And in the hallway, on the hallway access point, kinda we take care of one, two, three classes. Sometimes they overlap and create a mesh and cover the entire area. But when we started the one-to-one, we realized, I did some investigation that we don't, we, we have to have one in each classroom to be able to handle this. So, all, all of our schools, this is Lakewood.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Ju- just for clarification, I'm, I'm not sure, but is this not a breach of security if we're showing this information concerning access points of a school?
Pull that, pull that slide down, yes, thanks.
These are, these are the number of desktops by-location. In some cases, uh, for example, Crestwood High, uh, Suntor High, Lakewood High, and we see larger numbers at Furman and the middle schools. These are not all staff desktops. Uh, the high schools and the middle schools do use Kate Labs. We still have labs that are ha- have desktops in, in middle and high schools. Elementary schools, although they used to have labs, Windows labs, uh, we slowly phased all of those out, all those labs because of the, uh, one-to-one initiative, uh, there were no, no, no more need. The kids are using their homebooks. This is by group, the desktops by groups. It's just, uh, to give you an idea how many we have in a computer lab, how many are used by teachers, how many are used by administration and, and a new addition is our support staff. During the pandemic, before the pandemic, support staff, uh, didn't really have, or not all support staff had desktops, especially laptops. They didn't have laptops. But now, uh, we assign laptops to support staff, uh, to assist with instruction, to, to, to do remote work. And especially during the pandemic, they did a lot of remote work and they needed a laptop. This is number of laptops by-location. This is the numbers, uh, these are the numbers of Chromebooks by-location. I pe- uh, this is the, the end-of-life chart. So, these, these orders were different. Uh, this shows, shows us roughly how, uh, often we need to upgrade, uh, these Chromebooks and change them. So, when it says, for example, end-of-life, uh, zero five twelve twenty-four, uh, that, that number of Chromebooks needs to be changed on, on, on that, before that particular time. And we have to plan, plan to change these, these things. So, that's why we're seeing, I mean, in the bond, the constant, uh. This is the num- the network switches by-location. Like I mentioned, we have a total of, uh, four hundred servers. The single location that has two physical servers, uh, is Santa High School because, because of the size, uh, and they had many cameras, the server wouldn't handle, uh, one wouldn't handle all that stuff. But all other schools have one and S A C is, has a server, but it's using the cross-border server because they're on the same network. This is just an idea to give you an idea of how we fund all this work. We have main, just in a big overview, we have A, B, C, and D, four categories. Uh, on the category A, we have desktop lap- uh, laptops, Chromebooks, servers, and disaster recovery. Uh, all this is funded one hundred percent by capital projects. On the second category, uh, active panels and au- audio view, video equipment is also capital. Then we have another licensing where we have general budget. And then we have the last one is the network infrastructure where we use E-rate funding. We just have a small fifteen percent management. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions, please?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have like two questions, super fast, thank you. Uh, how many, um, IT professionals do we have in the district? Uh, are there any vacancies? And how often do we, um, audit our software license and ensure we're not duplicating programs? And we're, you know, we're maintaining a cost-effective footprint?
Great, great questions. Let's start with the first one. We, the entire department has eighteen staff members. Currently, uh, we have three positions open. It's pretty hard to fill positions because our salary is not that competitive. In the past two to three years, we offered over seven gentlemen positions that they refused because they just thought that the, uh, the cut for them was or too high or it was a lateral move. So, it was very hard to fill positions. We had the server admin position open, vacant for three years, and the network admin. So, at one point, I was doing all those three for more than three years. Luckily now, uh, the server admin and network admin is filled, so we're in pretty good shape. We have, we had to hire some young systems technicians and invest in training because we couldn't hire ex- experienced ones. But recently, we acquired two gentlemen, very young, and I'm, uh, very pleased on their progress and we're investing some time in them to get them where they need to be, but, but we'll get them. We have three positions open currently. We have an IT co-linear position open and two technician positions. Can you please repeat the second one?
How often do you guys audit the software licenses to ensure we're not duplicating?
Great question. We, we have a software that is called Special Operations. And that software is on each computer and desktop. And that software, it does, it doesn't full inventory of your machine, software and hardware. So, when I go out, let, just to give you an example, if I want to find out now, in one click of a button, how many twenty thousand, twenty-ten licenses I still have out there, that software will tell me exactly because inventory is live, this machine is every day connects and if something changes, I'll be seeing it. That's how we deal with that.
So, we're, I'm hearing regularly, it's, this is being looked at?
This is live.
Okay.
This is, this, this inventory is live and we regularly run reports.
Sure.
Especially when we plan for something.
Sure. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, just got a quick question. And it, you may not be the right, the right person to ask this, but, um, are you, with the cameras, are you just the ones that oversee installing or just keeping, keeping, uh, tabs on them?
We are, we're a great team. We, we have an IT surveillance person.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm looking over all, all of the purchases, I have to look at the purchases.
Okay, and that's good. My question is really more of where the, and where do they get set up? Are you guys going through an actual law enforcement agency that doesn't, that actually gives, uh, the vuln- vulnab- vulnerability, um, where the cameras need to be set up?
Great question.
That's another breach of security point of order.
Oh, I, I just wanna know a yes or no.
We should not be discussing that. You should not be discussing that.
I agree, I, I would be more than happy to give the details maybe in a.
Yeah, that's why, I'm just wanting yes or no, if you're doing that.
It is, it is a team that.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Can, can you explain to, uh, this board, um, what the, the small building on this campus, wha- what's the purpose of that building back there with, uh, I don't know if you refer to it as the Knox Building?
It's, it's a Network Operations Center slash data center.
Okay, what goes on in there?
Very, very good question. We have two sections in there. We have, uh, a road where we house all our network equipment that connects us with the schools. This, this entire office is directly connected with all the schools. We're not on different networks. Imagine that all your computers at home are on one network. We all, all our schools are on one single network. What then, the Network Operations Center does is protects us, puts us behind the firewall, connects us on a token ring so we can communicate. It does, it doesn't matter what school I'm in. I can now assist the person at Santa High School in twenty seconds, remote into their computer and, and offer IT habits because we're on the same. Also, we have applications here. Our school runs from there, uh, Enrich, we have a lot of applications that we deliver from the data center. So, if you will, you can imagine it like it's our own cloud of applications that we house.
Okay, um, I, I have several questions, but I'm not gonna use this time tonight to do that for the sake of the, um, timeframe of this meeting. Um, but I will request that technology come back before this board one more time. Uh, one, because I'm not sure why we as a board was not privy of the PowerPoint presentation. Or I, I could have overlooked it, I didn't see it in Board docs. Um, and so, I mean, and it was a lengthy PowerPoint with a great deal of information on it. And so, I'm the, I'm wondering if we can have technology to come back before this board so that we can look through that information that was given to us as a board, um, so that we can well, so that we can further develop, uh, more questions to ask. Because I do have some, some serious questions, uh, because I do have some concerns as it relates to technology.
Any others? Speak to us again about the, um, the policy or the asset test or the procedure used to determine the life of devices? When? What, what is the process of determining when a device is obsolete?
That's a great question, Dr. Kenton. Typically, the life of device is determined by the warranty of the device. Uh, so, if you buy a device with five years of warranty, after the warranty expires, the device reached end of life. And the reason is, in some cases in the past, some companies offered extended warranty. Now, all the companies drop it. So, even if you would like to extend, they don't want to offer you extended warranty. So, at that point, the, the device reached end of life.
Okay. All right, so if a Chromebook comes in and it says, um, life of this product, five years, then no matter what shape it's in at the end of five years, it's, it's deemed obsolete?
Well, nor- nor- normal conditions, we, we do have a large number of Chromebooks. That's the single exception where we keep them, if they're in good condition, we still keep them in rotation. Uh, some of them that are broken, we use the parts from them to repair other ones. Currently, currently we have, we have an order that wish them of life in May this year. Uh, we have approximately four thousand five hundred Chromebooks.
Okay.
We still have many of these in rotation because they're in good condition. So, we are extending their life. If they break, we cannot repair them, so they, we won't repair them. We use that Chromebook, if it has a good touchpad or it has a good keyboard, to repair some other ones to extend their life.
But under no, but under normal procedures, are you saying you, you have some kind of titular system in place so
Yes.
that re- replacement is almost automatic according to the standard? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a procedure in place.
Yeah.
And we have.
All right, and, and so, at, at the end of five years, the device is replaced. What happens to the device when it's taken out of the classroom or taken off of the desk?
Great question. We have a, a company that is on state contract that handles obsolete equipment and they recycle obsolete equipment. So, we contact this company and they, they currently, they're on state contract.
Okay. Do you have an idea what that contractor does with those, um, machines? Does he sell them? Does he put them on a dump pile or what?
No, they recycle. They take.
They're, they're recycled?
They take them apart, they have, they have some parts that they can recycle. And of course, they, they pay us an amount per pound, which, uh, I sent the information, I can send it again.
Okay. If we have this system, this procedure in place, would sort of automatically remove devices on their quote, death date? Can you tell me why it is we warehouse them so long?
Typically, Chromebooks don't stay in the warehouse too long. They, because the, the. Typically, Chromebooks don't stay in the warehouse too long. They, because the, the, they don't need engineering. Uh, they come in, they go out. For example, in August, we had an order, eight hundred of them came in. We send them by the school. We had to, we did two orders in that month, because they went out so fast. Uh, with Windows machines, it's a little different because they come in and they need to be imaged. We have to touch each and one of them. We have to put an image on them, put them in the bag, assign them to a person, send out an email for people to come and pick them up because we assign those here at this office. So the, the deployment of, of the project takes longer times.
Okay.
How long the Chromebooks, how long do they stay in storage? You said they don't stay in long. How, how long? What timeframe?
Some, somebody else was saying some...
Right now, I have three hundred and forty Chromebooks, uh, in the warehouse from the last order that was in September.
And you have how many?
Three hundred and forty-eight.
Three hundred and forty-eight?
Yes.
And it was since September?
These were ordered in the last month.
Last month?
No, no, exactly. In the last month.
So you don't have no more besides those three hundred and forty-eight? That's it?
And this order had eight hundred.
That order had eight hundred, and it was September?
I mean, the, uh, the remain, the difference already went out to the school.
Mm-hmm.
And these three forty-eight, one hundred are slated to add to vacation. So they will be processed this week. I, Nungo and I set up a plan last week, and then we used two hundred and fifty for the ones that we have coming in that we, there are four thousand out of them. So we can have a bunch of them coming in that we can repair without one. We can use the difference to be ready available to fill the gaps. In the meantime, we're gonna use those broken ones to fix some other ones that are out so we can create a, a pillow to be able to handle.
Absolutely. So as of today, we don't have anything in storage far as Chromebooks, laptops? We, they're all out?
We have three hundred and forty-eight in the warehouse.
Besides, that, that's it?
Right now, that's it.
That's it? Okay. Do you know what dates are on those Chromebooks in the warehouse? How old they are? Those are the ones that came in in September, right? He said they came September last month. September when? Twenty twenty-three, right? He said, guess what he said? He said they came in last month.
I sent all the information to show on tape with all the field numbers and all of those we have in the, since twenty eighteen that I included.
But you just said that the three hundred and forty-eight that's in there, they came in last month, right?
Last?
Yeah. He said they came last month. Yeah.
We have the server coming in eight months, and we have three hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah. Got you. Got you.
Okay. I have, I have, I have another que- anybody else have a question? I'm, I, I was not finished with my question.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I have, I have another question. I, I don't want you to give me a specific answer, though. I don't want you to give me a specific answer. This is such a, a massive system. And we, we, we're talking about a hundreds, thousands of devices, et cetera, panels, et cetera. So we're talking about a, a number of passwords, et cetera. Major. I, I suspect, uh, a major password for, for the infrastructure and for other smaller portions. My question, my question is not who, but how many members of the district staff have access to those passwords?
Great question. This depends on, on, on many things.
Excuse me?
That, 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 I can answer this in, in two parts. There are sys- different systems that are high-level systems where we have only the admin IT staff can access, which is, the admin IT staff is four positions. Uh, myself, the network admin, server admin, the IT coordinator. This is the, the admin part of the department. So in some systems that are high-level, only these four people have access. And then on other systems that are lower level where we don't have data that we can compromise, that access only...
Well, let, well, let me push the question a step further. Is there some safe fireproof vault, et cetera, where those passwords are that someone could get to other than you if something happened to you?
I can talk on behalf of my staff members, but I don't have my password written down anywhere. They're all good here.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking beyond your staff, your staff. I'm speaking now, uh, of the,
Of an inventory.
the superintendent, then the,
Superintendent.
the, the chief of finance. Some, someone at some level ought to have access to the knowledge of where it is and access to, because anything can happen. I don't want, I don't want answers tonight. But I think as a board, we need to get that resolved. That must be resolved. Uh, if it exists, it needs to be resolved.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. All right. All right. Anyone else?
Fi- final question. I just have one more question.
Oh, I thought you were gonna never...
No, sir.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
How many, uh, district facilities are we using to provide storage for IT at this present time?
Storage, uh, s- we, we don't use storage facilities, but we have obsolete equipment in several locations centrally, uh, put in a room. Uh, I can name you three of them. Ari Davis, for example, has a pickup tomorrow. They have some old Chromebooks. They have some TVs. Uh, they put every, everything in a room. So we, we assisted them. We scheduled for, for the, uh, yesterday. Uh, and Lemira has some old CRTs also in, in a room in the library. And Sumter High has a room with some, uh, obsolete equipment. So these, these, these are two that are...
Are the, the Sumter High location, are all the equipment in that room obsolete? That means we're gonna just get rid of all the equipment inside of that Sumter High room? That's what you're saying?
That room in Sumter High current, as of today, has only obsolete equipment. We had stored there some boards we had in stock that were, uh, planned, uh, to change in, uh, defective ones, to have in so, smaller, to be able to respond in time and fashion. And those were all, uh, debris of, of plastic.
It, Mr. Chair, to piggyback on Dr. Reagan's question, okay, so you have a pickup at Ari Davis, you have a pickup at Sumter High. Where are you taking it?
This company that is recycling is taking all the...
They are picking it up and taking it? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I do agree with Dr. Reagan. Kinda like I reserve the right to recall the witness. It, I think we do need to, to, um...
Have some further conversation?
Have further conversation, yes, for clarification on several points.
And can we get that PowerPoint presentation in advance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would be my pleasure to.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right. Sir, thank you for time, your time, and for the presentation. Appreciate it.
You have a wonderful time.
Your turn.
Mr. Chair and our, our members of the board trustees, if I may really briefly, we, we will work to, um, ensure that, um, that information that the board discusses in the proper place. Uh, I'll make sure that a certain type of schools that I have access to what we need to in case, uh, of issue. So we'll, we'll get that straightened out.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Item five, executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move to enter an executive session for discussion for individual student matter transfers in and out of district, the monthly personnel report, uh, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee, realignment, salary study, and superintendent contractual matters.
Second.
The motion is supported. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, you may vote your conviction. Board returns from open session. Item number seven, actions related to exec- to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an emotion, a, a, a motion to allow student A to attend out-of-school zone for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
You have the motion and the second. Are you prepared to, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, you may proceed to the vote.
Voting unanimous, it passes.
All right. The vote is unanimous. It passes. Personnel? Seven point two? Oh, no, we got the most seven point ones. Um...
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the salary study as presented on nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-three?
All right.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Motion and second, and that is, that is gonna be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may proceed to the vote.
Going unanimous, it passes?
Unanimous.
Voting unanimous.
All right. Unanimous, it passes, all right?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to make the motion to approve first reading of policies AA, AC, ACB, ACE, ADB, ADC, ADD, BA, BB, BBA, BBAR, BB, AAR, BBB, BBA, BBBC, BDF, BDFR, BDH, BEC, BEDA, BEDB, and BEDF.
Oh, my God. My, my, my.
Mr. Chair, I won't repeat that, but I do second that motion.
The mo- the motion is supported on, on policy recommendations. Is there any discussion? If there's none, you may proceed to the vote.
Voting unanimous, it passes?
Another unanimous vote. Passes. Personnel? Is that the next one? No?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel report as presented for August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right. Motion is second.
Second.
Personnel report being received and adopted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, you may proceed to the vote.
Oh, it's wrong.
Oh, the date was wrong. Yes, yes. That's right.
Do I need to, how do I need to correct that?
Amend the motion with the correct date or withdraw the motion?
Which?
She's, she's...
The date was incorrect.
She's corrected the date, there's...
It's correct up there.
Yeah.
It's incorrect here.
Hmm.
No.
Voting unanimous?
We're just cleaning that up.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. The vote is unanimous, it carries. Is that it? That's it, huh? That's it? Um, ladies and... Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Scott?
The consent, the consent...
Agenda item.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you. You're so smart. I appreciate that. The consent agenda, is there, if there is no objection, the consent agenda stands approved. Ms. Scott, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen aboard, thank you for a great meeting tonight, even though it was protracted. God bless you. Have a good night.